Opening up Town of Fairfield's Zoning Board of Appeals, September 7, 2023. We have many items on our agenda today, but first, I'd like to entertain a motion to move into executive session to discuss pending litigation regarding 155 Turney Road. Entertain such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. We're moving into executive session. We'll be reopening the hearing in 10 minutes. I'm reopening regular sessions. We have a few items on the agenda. The first is our issue regarding the closed executive session. I would like to entertain a motion to endorse the sustaining of the appeal by Minkley as to the Town of Fairfield Zoning Board of Appeals and Ms. Natorp relative to 155 Turney Road. Entertain such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Do you want to grab people?
I'm going to see if I can. Try to avoid the whole grabbing.
You should hold her.
You just get in trouble when you do that.
But I guess we're okay with him trying.
We're okay with sustain, which is a little trouble.
Do I think he needs to do that? No.
Well, what about that one? How much?
So you don't think it's going to slap your hands for it?
Yes. I love it. I mean, it's not a big deal.
Kevin, will we pause? Can we pause this?
Yes.
It was not a big deal. It wasn't anything big.
You're on. All right. So we're back on the record, Town of Fairfield Zoning Board of Appeals, September 7, 2023. Before we get started, I have a couple things on our agenda, and the first is approval of the minutes from Wednesday, August 2, 2023. Entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Brian, oops.
You, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Terry. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, bring it to a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? None. Motion carries. Our second is approval of secretary's fees. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Jason.
Thank you, Jane. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, bring it to a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. And we'll begin our, go right to our call, and then we'll begin our hearing right after our call. Call into order, Fairfield Zoning Board of Appeals, September 7, 2023. When a matter is called at that point, I'd like the applicant and his or her agent to come up to the podium and present your case at that time. During your presentation, and I emphasize only during your presentation, meaning not while I'm talking, making the call and describing what's going to become before us, but while you're making your presentation, you can share with us, with the board, anything you want us to consider, whether it's a photograph, if you have it, I see we have a chart here, a map, you can hold it up to us, whatever, but it's during your presentation that to share. I don't want to interfere with making sure the record is accurate. After the applicant or his or her agent presents their information that they want us to consider, I will then invite people that are in favor of the application to come forward and speak. All right? So I go in order, the applicant, his or her agent, people in favor, and then I will invite anyone that has opposition to that application to also come forward. It's all going up to the podium and give your name and address. If there is anyone in opposition to an application, I will then allow the agent or his or her representative to address those comments and opposition. That is only a time to address comments that are in opposition, a rebuttal time. It's not a time for you to restate your application, it's a time for you to address the comments that opposed your application. This meeting is being taped, and why I make certain instructions and comments in the beginning is I want to make sure that the recording is clear because it's required by law for us to have a clear recording of this hearing. It's important that we be able to understand the tape. Therefore, only one person can speak at a time. Anyone who does speak goes up to the podium, gives your name and address. Welcome the comments of anyone who's interested in any application, whether you're in favor of it, whether you're against it. But remember, this is the zoning board of appeals. We sit here and discuss things and consider things relative to our regulations for people that are looking variances for those, and also sometimes there's a request to reverse something that a zoning official has done, and we have one of those hearings before us. So our focus is somewhat limited. Why I mention that is that you need to make sure that your comments are on point to what the zoning board of appeals is deciding and what we're considering. I reserve my right as the chairman to restrict your comments at any time, and I want no outbursts from anyone. Audience, if you disagree with someone, I will be giving you an opportunity to disagree in a proper form and in a proper format. I don't want to have anyone making comments from the audience if they're not pleased with what someone else says about a particular application. Everyone is entitled to their opinion and their comment on any application that becomes for this board, but I will restrict your comments, and I will ask you to leave if you're an interruption to this hearing and meeting. Okay? Advocates and interested people can remain in attendance after our public hearing because after our public hearing, we'll probably take a little break, and then we'll be voting on everything that goes forward today. So when we, when we vote, there's five voting members on the zoning board of appeals. For your variance to be granted, you are going to need at least four to vote in favor of your particular application. Anything, any application that comes forward for it to be granted, you need four out of five to vote in favor, a super majority. So, and that's for the application. The question of whether an application is timely or not is not a super majority, but a simple majority. So just keep that in mind. If the application for a waiver is granted, it's not going to be valid and of no use to the applicant until it's recorded on the land records. So if your application for a variance is granted, you need to bring or send a check made out to the Town of Fairfield in the amount of $60 and bring it to the zoning office so your variance can be properly recorded on the land records. If you cannot stay for the voting session, and we open that up to the public to listen, and I think it's important for you to listen because when there's discussion on something that you're interested in, you might understand or gain some insight as to why we decided the way we did. You know, you can agree or disagree with this board, but at least you'll understand from some of the comments why we made the decision that we did. If you can't stay, just call the zoning office, and they can advise you of, you know, the decision, but they might not advise you of everything that was said, so I think it's important to stay if you can, but there's no penalty if you can't stay. I'm not keeping track, I'm not keeping attendance, I'm not going to say, oh, application for whatever. They left. No, that's, that's not how it works, but I just think it's a good idea, and that's why, since I've been on this board, we have always allowed people to stay and listen to our discussion afterwards. Any waiver of zoning regulation which involves construction, whether it's a new dwelling addition or alteration, requires an as-built prior to issuance of certificate of zoning compliance and a certificate of occupancy. Now, our first matter that we have for consideration, this is on our continued docket, and this is 750 Post Road, map 141, parcel 80, petition of Elliott Street Partners LLC and Wiel Associates LLC to reverse or modify the decision of the zoning administrator, permission to reverse the decision to issue a zoning permit, premises DCD zone. Attorney Green, this is you. And Attorney Green, familiar with this, and I think you understand this, and I know Attorney Knopf, we discussed this, that we're first going to address the timeliness of the appeal. Is that accurate, Attorney Green?
As I understand it, that is the plan.
Okay. And then after the presentation between the attorneys on the timeliness, we're going to proceed to vote at that time because we continue to take you in order depending upon that vote. It will either proceed to discussing your merits or it will not proceed. Okay?
Fair enough.
All right.
For the record, my name is Joel Green. I practice law in Bridgeport with the Law Offices of Green and Gross. It's my pleasure to appear before the board this afternoon on behalf of Elliott Street Partners and Wiel Associates with respect to this appeal. I have incorporated, I've submitted the salient portions of our argument in writing for the commission, and that was filed last Friday, and hopefully you've all had an opportunity to review those materials. By way of background, the appellant Elliott Street Partners owns the property at 17 Elliott Street and the premises at 73 Elliott Street that are located, and you saw the map, they're located within 100 feet of the premises at 750 Post Road, that's the subject of this application. Wiel Associates owns 808 Post Road, that's similarly within 100 feet of the subject property. 750 Post Road Associates owns 750 Post Road. All the properties are located in a designed commercial district. In 1998, a certificate of zoning compliance was approved for the use of 750 Post Road for Joe's American Bar and Grill. You're all, I'm sure, familiar with it. I was personally there many times, and you may remember that Joe's American was a sit-down restaurant. You were served at the bar, you were served at tables. It was no takeout component of any significance at all, and certainly patrons of that restaurant were not served while seated in motor vehicles, and I will tie this into the jurisdictional issue that is before the board right now, the initial issue in a moment. You have the as-built survey in the record that I have provided to you as an exhibit. After November of 1998, the premises were used by Joe's for 20 years for that restaurant use, again, where patrons were seated at tables, seated and served at tables or at the, at the bar. In 2019, as you may recall, Joe's closed its doors, just three years ago, or four years ago now, I'm sorry. In June of 2021, 750 Post Road Associates, who owns the property, filed an application through Phil Saron for a, I'm sorry, filed an application initially with the Planning and Zoning Commission to establish a Chick-fil-A restaurant with a drive-through, and that was heard by the Planning and Zoning, Plan and Zoning Commission, and ultimately, in November, that application was denied. In August of 2022, a year ago, 750 Post Road, through Phil Saron, filed a certificate of zoning compliance application with the zoning department, and that certificate of zoning compliance said that that is for, what they were seeking to do was merely exterior renovations and repairs to existing building in addition of a new handicap accessible ramp. That's all that certificate of zoning compliance asked for and stated. In October, and that, by the way, that, that application was approved by zoning staff, it was signed by Matt Decker. On October 11 of 2022, a notice was posted in the Connecticut Post, and it said that a certificate of zoning compliance had been issued, and it said, "for exterior renovations and repairs to existing building in addition of new handicap accessible ramps." That's the notice that appeared in the paper, just that, just some work on the exterior, and we're adding a handicap ramp. On November 18 of '22, the applicant, again, through Phil Saron, filed an application for a certificate of zoning compliance, another one, and what that said was, "for proposed interior renovations and exterior patio to renovate existing restaurant space." So, doing some work. That was approved the same day by Matt Decker, and on December 7 of '22, a notice was published that said just that, and it said, "some interior renovations and exterior patio to renovate existing restaurant space at 750 Post Road." A building permit issued in January of '23. As of April 25, no significant work had been performed, but whatever work was done was apparently consistent with the certificate of zoning compliance. In April, on about April 25 of 2023, the applicant disclosed to the town, to town officials, including zoning staff, including Matt Decker and Jim Went, that the property at 750 Post Road would be used for a Chick-fil-A restaurant. That was the first notice that the property was being used for a Chick-fil-A, and that was apparently what the certificate of zoning compliances had been issued for. Now, Chick-fil-A is a national high-volume fast-food franchise chain of restaurants, and Chick-fil-A's include a robust and substantial takeout business, and many of them involve service of customers in cars. They will run the food out to your car, and I've witnessed that in Brookfield. They are no longer doing it in Norwalk, but over the past year, having been involved with this application, I've noticed the way Chick-fil-A's operate. I take special note. I don't eat there often, but I'm always curious as to how they operate. There can be no question that a Chick-fil-A use is different than Joe's American, and the reason I went through, and I've provided you with some materials in your packet as to how Joe's looked, how it ran, you see the menu, there is nothing about takeout. I can tell you that Chick-fil-A operates completely differently, and when you walk into a Chick-fil-A, there's a counter, there's a sign that says, "mobile orders this way," and other orders in another lane. You go to a counter, you order, and the food generally is handed to you, whether you've pre-ordered or you order at the counter, and then there is a dining area, but I can assure you that as recently as 2:00 today, that Chick-fil-A is doing a robust takeout business, and part of its model is takeout, is takeout. It is not the same as a Joe's American Bar and Grill, not remotely in terms of the way it operates. So, it is our position under the zoning regulations, there are three categories of restaurant uses under the zoning regulations. 12.4.15 is restaurants and food service that includes non-table service restaurants and catering. 12.4.16 is drive-through restaurants, provided that they have a stacking area having a shape of not less than 10 feet by 150 feet per window, that's, you know, the length of the drive-up lane, and we went through that application, and in fact, the application to the Planning and Zoning Commission specifically said, "we're going to be a drive-through restaurant," and that's what was denied by the Planning and Zoning Commission, Plan and Zoning Commission, pardon me. The last category is restaurants and other food service establishments where customers are served only when seated at tables or counters, when seated at tables or counters. Such uses may include food takeout service incidental to the primary use, but shall not include establishments where customers are served in motor vehicles. Chick-fil-A does not fall into the 12.4.17 category. It can only be considered to be restaurant food service, non-table service restaurants and catering, because takeout is a huge component of its business, and in many of the Chick-fil-A's that I have seen, customers are served in motor vehicles, while seated in motor vehicles. They will run the food out, and in fact, in Brookfield, when the queue gets long, they actually direct you, even when the, when the drive-through queue gets behind on Friday nights or on Saturday afternoons, even from the drive-through, they have customers queue up in a lot or on the, on the drive coming in, and they run the food out. So, our contention is then that Chick-fil-A is a different category of use under the zoning regulations than Joe's American was. Sit-down restaurant and takeout restaurant, which has incidental interior dining, so it's reversed. So why is that important? It's important because under section 25 of the zoning regulations, a special permit is required for any new construction, reconstruction, exterior alterations, or addition for a use permitted. Change from one permitted use to another use not involving new construction, reconstruction, exterior alterations or additions shall require an application for a certificate of zoning compliance. So what happened here is, there's a change of use, there's a change of use, and obviously, and admittedly, based on the notice, there are exterior renovations. I would also submit that you can see from the site plan, and I've provided you with these site plans, there were changes in the parking, and I don't, I don't suspect that they were part of the certificate of zoning compliance, but there are many changes in the plan that was presented. So there were exterior alterations, clearly reconstruction, clearly new construction. I showed pictures of the new, I showed pictures of the construction underway, and for anyone who's driven by 750 Post Road, you can see the extensive, extensive work, coupled with a change of use. So our position is not necessarily that Chick-fil-A cannot operate at 750 Post Road. Our, and I don't think it should, because our position is that a special permit is required, and with a special permit review, the Plan and Zoning Commission would assure that all of those things that have to be satisfied to get a special permit, adequate traffic measures, adequate parking, and there are a number of factors under the zoning regulations, and the Plan and Zoning Commission would review that. So, as to timeliness then, our position is that no one, the town, no one, the public, no one had noticed of the change of use until the owner announced that it was using the property not for a restaurant, a sit-down restaurant like Joe's, but it was now going to be used for a Chick-fil-A, and that was April 25 or April 28. Our appeal was clearly filed within 30 days of that date, as soon as we got notice of that, and basically, what we are suggesting is that on that date, when staff became aware of the change of use, that staff should have either rescinded the, both of these certificates of zoning compliance because they were in anticipation of a change of use, and at that moment, when, when the owner announced that there was a change of use coupled with this exterior work, to require that a special permit be filed prior to Chick-fil-A operating on the site, if that is the use that is selected. So on the issue of timeliness, I suppose the issues for your jurisdiction are, A, are standing to appeal, which we've established by virtue of the fact, under Connecticut general statutes, the evidence in the record is that the properties are within 100 feet, and on timeliness, the, this appeal was filed within 30 days of my clients having notice and learning that it's a Chick-fil-A, which presents significant problems. If you were a business on Elliott Street, I, I can't, based on our experience with the planning and zoning, a plan and zoning application, I can assure you, you will have major, major interruption. And based on what I have seen, and I presented at the zoning commission meetings, video and photos of other Chick-fil-A's with traffic backed up out into main roads trying to access that site, and that is the kind of review, and those are the kind of projects that the zoning commission in the exercise of its jurisdiction should be reviewing and assuring that there are safeguards for the benefit of everyone, both the operator and certainly the public who has to use all of those streets and operate in that area safely. So that is the basis of jurisdiction. This is largely stated in the documents that I submitted to you. I am happy to answer any questions, and that's all I have for the moment.
Thank you, Attorney Green. We'll open it up to some questions. I don't think that there is opposition on the question of standing, but I'll let Attorney Knopf speak to that. I think your documents demonstrated that, so I think the issue is timeliness, so, but if there's questions about standing, ask that, but if you have questions for Attorney Green on the timeliness issue. So let me just understand, Attorney Green, your, your appeal technically is from the two sign-offs from the zoning compliance department, correct? Which were back in August and November, but your argument is that they should have done something else after April 25?
We raised three points. One is that in hindsight, based on the April 25 disclosure that it was a Chick-fil-A, that the, and the improvements and the work being done for a change of use, that the certificates of zoning compliance should not have been issued, and at that moment, we learned that. Two, that staff did not rescind at that moment when they learned that in fact there was this change of use, that staff did not rescind it, and three, that staff did not require then, knowing that the property is going to be used, notify or require that a special permit be required before the applicant proceeded with the fit-up of the property for a Chick-fil-A. And once again, it is not our position that absolutely the property can't be used for Chick-fil-A, but all we are asking is that Chick-fil-A follow the same rules that everyone else follows when they're changing the use, coupled with exterior renovations and exterior work.
I understand. It doesn't really answer my question though, because the call is permission to reverse the decision to issue a zoning permit. Isn't that what you're appealing?
No, my appeal is stated in the, in my appeal papers.
I'm reading from the call.
Okay.
Of the record. Isn't that accurate?
I, it may be that the call says that, but that's not what our appeal said.
Okay. How do we hear something that is not part of our agenda?
Because I think that a fair reading of it is that anyone who saw that there's an appeal from the issuance of the certificates of zoning compliance would arguably review the application and see that it doesn't, I don't know that the call always goes into precise detail on all of the issues being appealed in an appeal of this nature.
I think the call, I think the call goes into pretty precise detail, because you want to reverse the decision to issue the permit.
Well, if the chair is suggesting then that the call is problematical, and I respect that, then this matter should be deferred to the October hearing, and the call should be corrected.
The call can't be corrected. You're, you're wanting to reverse a decision to issue a permit. That's what you want?
I said, we stated in our appeal that we are appealing from each of the following orders, decisions, and actions of the planning director, James Went, and zoning enforcement officer, Matthew C. Decker. A, the issuance of the September approval and/or the November approval, that is the application for certificates of zoning compliance. B, their failure to rescind the approvals, the September approval and the November approval. C, the failure to rescind the building permit endorsement, where they sign off on the building permit. And D, that a special permit pursuant to section 25 of the zoning regulations is not required, that they made that decision. So those are the things that we, in our appeal, stated. Now, if the chair is suggesting that the call of this meeting or notice, public notice is inadequate, then I suppose the remedy for that is to renotice it and reconvene this hearing.
No, I'm not, I'm asking the questions.
Well, this is what I.
You gave the answer.
Okay.
All right. Any other question?
One quick question, and this may be a little in-depth. Is there, was there anything in the initial process in October and November that would have either specifically prevented someone doing a plain reading of those documents from knowing either who the applicant was or from knowing either who the applicant was, or in any way inferring the change of use? In other words, if you reviewed those documents during those times, would you have had the ability to infer that there was, or a layperson reading those documents, infer that there would have been a change of use, or that the applicant, the applicant being someone who would want to change that use?
Answer is absolutely not. There was no way to infer a change of use, and in fact, as I noted, the second application said interior renovations to an existing restaurant. Therefore, that further reinforced that there wasn't going to be a change in use.
Okay. Any other questions for Attorney Green? Okay. Attorney Nuff?
My name is John Nuff. I'm an attorney with an office at 147 Broad Street in Milford, Connecticut. I'm here tonight, or this evening, this is unusual, a pleasant change from my, my normal schedule of being in the afternoon rather than the evening. So, I'm here this afternoon on behalf of 750 Post Road Associates LLC. The ZBA does not have jurisdiction to hear this appeal because it is plainly untimely, and that is the sole matter before you at the moment. In claiming that there's a change of use, Attorney Green is attempting to raise substantive claims as to whether the zoning permits should have been issued or not, including providing his own testimony and his own speculation that has no basis in the record. He is wrong on the substance, of course, but those claims are not in any way irrelevant to the procedural question of whether you should dismiss this appeal for lack of jurisdiction. A review of the record and the relevant case law mandates that you dismiss the appeal because the appellant's have not offered any valid basis as to why they should be excused from the mandatory and explicit direction of Section 8-7 of the Connecticut general statutes, which requires the filing of the appeal no later than 30 days after a published notice. In raising substantive claims, his goal is to divert attention away from the fact that there are no statutes that are more straightforward in their application than Sections 8-3F and Section 8-7. Section 8-3F sets forth the requirements of a notice that triggers the commencement of an appeal period under 8-7. Despite all the bluster, what Attorney Green has not said, because he cannot, is that the notices did not satisfy the strict requirements of the notices set forth in 8-3F. It prescribed the description of the building, use or structure, it identified the location, it identified the applicant, and they identified the statement that Green party may appeal to the ZBA. Both notices met the strict rules of 8-3F. It is telling that Attorney Green has not offered any case law, the topic, or the sufficiency of notices that trigger an appeal under 8-7. Similarly, what Attorney Green has not said, because he cannot, is that he or his clients saw the notices were somehow misled. The fact is, not only do the notices comply with 8-3F, but the published notices were more than sufficient to put the, put the world on notice that a zoning permit for a restaurant was approved, such that an interested party could have made further inquiry. The notice need not have specified the user, nor the specific type of restaurant, and the appellant's have provided no support of any kind to the contrary. It is not our fault, or the staff's fault, that Attorney Green's clients failed to read the notice section of the paper. Section 8-7 is even easier in his application than 8-3F. It simply requires that one count 30 days from the date a notice is published. If the date of appeal is greater than 30 days, it is untimely, the ZBA lacks jurisdiction, and it must be dismissed. Connecticut courts have emphasized, quote, "strict compliance" with the statute, including the 30-day appeal periods, and there are compelling policy reasons for requiring strict compliance. It is the fundamental right and expectation not only of the property owner and the tenant, but the town itself. Second policy decision, basis, the stability of decisions of land use officials. Three, justifiable reliance by property owners in the town on staff decisions. And four, eliminating the vulnerability and uncertainty of permits for an indefinite amount of time. The last one is particularly relevant here. The appellant's claim that the appeal period should have commenced upon the publication of a news article on April 25th. But ask yourselves, what if there weren't an article? Under Attorney Green's theory, the appeal period would still be running while work on the property continues. The statute is designed specifically to preclude precisely what is happening here. A business owner who is unfairly and improperly trying to disadvantage a competing business, that's the purpose of the notice provision, to foster certainty, and relies upon the process and the statutes so that the, so that parties, including the town, can make important decisions and investments in their personal and business lives. So I could end here. We published notices and strict compliance with 8-3F. The appellant's filed their appeal more than 30 days after the latter two notices. The appellant's have provided no support for their claim that the notices did not comply with 8-3F, therefore the ZBA lacks jurisdiction. But just to make sure that the record is clear and complete, the Joe's zoning permit, which was submitted by Attorney Green, provides that Joe's was approved as a, quote, "restaurant use." That's the certificate of zoning compliance that was issued for Joe's in 1998. No specific type of restaurant was identified. And let's be clear, while we all know that zoning regulates the use and not the user, it is apparent that the appellant's are really challenging the user. Second, the TPZ, who heard the original application for a special permit, that was an entirely new building with a drive-through, taking down Joe's, taking down the barber shop, approved the signed application, and Jim Wentz's memo does a good job explaining this, because it also determined that Chick-fil-A was a permitted restaurant use within the Joe's building, thereby explicitly rejecting the exact same argument that Attorney Green was making here. Jim's memo provides a copy of the submission that Attorney Green made to the TPZ with regard to the signed application. The arguments are identical. The TPZ considered those and rejected them, and approved the signed application. Therefore, to find on behalf of the appellant's, on either procedural or substantive basis, would be to take a position contrary to the opinion of your zoning enforcement officer, your town planner, the Town Plan and Zoning Commission, and those parties' past practices. So, I, I think that this matter is as clear-cut as you could have. The notices were published, the appeal came 164 days after the latter two of those, of those notices. The commission, or the board is without jurisdiction to hear this, and should be dismissed. Have any interesting questions?
Thank you, Attorney Nuff. Board, have any questions for Attorney Nuff?
Yes, please.
Yeah.
Two questions. I'm, I will not debate either the cleverness or the accuracy of the application, or the initial applications. Do you think it is reasonable that an applicant be clear on the use of a space relative to either its past approval or its currently seeking approval for a use of a space with knowledge of regulation within the town? And the expectation, whether taking advantage of or simply using a plain text reading, that you say, "We're going to be a restaurant," with knowledge of the use of that restaurant and the type of that restaurant being specifically different than the existing case? Do you think that's unreasonable or reasonable to expect?
Well, I, I respectfully agree with the, with the characterization that we're taking advantage. There's a plan set that probably consisted of, I don't know, 90 to 100 pages, that was sitting upstairs for all the world to see. We published a notice that said "a restaurant use," that it was in complete compliance with 8-3F. That, that your own town staff approved, both Matt and Jim signed off on that. So, I, I reject the characterization that we are in some way trying to take advantage. It was a restaurant building, it's going to be a restaurant building, the use is continuing, this is consistent with past practices, and the question is, was the notice sufficient under 8-3F? No one can say that it wasn't. The purpose of a notice is not to predict the future. The purpose of a notice is to put the world on notice that they might want to make further inquiry. There is no question that that notice that said "a restaurant use" put the world on notice, they should may want to go look at the plans. And, and you can draw whatever conclusions you want from those plans. It's a restaurant.
Any other questions? Attorney Nuff, I have a question. Just.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just, just to clear things up, are you saying that Chick-fil-A is exactly like Joe's American, and operating exactly the same way, the same kind of restaurant?
I'm saying that under, I'm saying they're both restaurants, as, in the eyes of the town of, of the, of the town of Fairfield. Joe's was approved as a restaurant. This was approved as a restaurant. Listen, is Chick-fil-A different from McDonald's, which is different from Pachi, which is different from, I don't know, the Four Seasons? Well, of course, they're all different. But that's not the point. As, as we keep on saying, zoning regulates the use, not the user. And was the notice sufficient to put the world on notice, and did it comply with 8-3F? There's no question that, that both of those answers are yes.
When you filled out those applications in the fall, did you have to say which section of the zoning code that you were?
I, I didn't. It was, it was, it was a certificate of zoning compliance submitted by the architect, Phil Serone. I, I don't believe, I think it indicates a restaurant use.
Does it say which of those?
I don't, I don't think it's required to, no.
It wasn't required to, it's just?
I, I don't think it did, no. But keep in mind, your staff had the plan sets in front of them when they approved the certificate of zoning compliance. So it's not as if we said, "Here's a three-page application for a restaurant, please approve it." With that came a very significant set of plans that they could analyze and ask questions about, and they determined that it was a restaurant use and permitted, as did the Town Plan and Zoning Commission agreed that a restaurant use is a restaurant use.
So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna further my question by, one, it is the intent of the applicant to comply with all restrictions, requirements, and rules for a restaurant, correct? As stated in the regulations for the town and the code?
Well, in, in this case, the code.
Right.
The building code.
But it is.
The building code.
The building code.
Right.
Which would restrict specific types of operation?
I don't think the building code would do that.
Okay.
And again, I, you know, I'm.
It's not, it's not, it's not my intention, my intention. My, my sole intention is asking is whether the applicant will abide by all requirements of the code. Of the, of the building code.
Building code, of the regulations. We're, 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 we're here about regulations.
Regulations.
We're talking regulations.
Yep.
We're not talking.
Regulation.
Yes. Of course, they will comply with all relevant portions of the code.
Okay. The only question I have.
All right. Attorney Nuff, just to highlight as to, and follow up on the question that I gave to Attorney Green, and I, I hear you on the dates of the published notices and the timing of the appeal, obviously it's 160-something days. But Attorney Green's position is that he's also appealing from the failure to rescind this earlier decision in the April 25-28 timeframe. It, how do we, how, tell me how that fits to 8-7?
Well, you see, Jerry raised the statute of limitations over the appeal period. I mean, he could, he could tomorrow ask Jim to revoke the, the certificate of zoning compliance, and start a whole new 30-day appeal period. I, I don't think that you can do an end-around 8-7. And I don't know that Jim issued a decision saying that he won't rescind it, because that's what you have to appeal from, a decision. And I don't believe there was a decision under request to rescind.
Okay. Any other questions?
And by the way, that's a longstanding trick that frankly, opposition attorneys use, as, as a way to extend the, the time limit for filing appeal. There's only one relevant date, the issuance of the certificate of zoning compliance, and the date that the notices were published. Otherwise, we will be here forever. And that goes to the policy issues. People have a right to rely upon the statutes. They have a right to rely upon the informed decisions of your zoning staff, which, and those combined say to you, "Listen, you're going to be making a substantial investment. How do I know a competitor will not come out of the woodwork a month, six months, a year, three years after making a substantial investment and say, 'Oh, guess what? We're appealing that decision, and now you have to shut down your work.'" What is that, what would that mean, frankly, for any business in the state of Connecticut, or specifically here in Fairfield? It means that anyone opening a restaurant nearby, some of Joe's brings clients, will be, continue in this quest. And you'd be sending a horrific message.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Okay. Attorney Green, as you know, the process, you get to rebut the, the comments of Attorney Nuff.
Thank you.
Well, let's, as you well know, let's keep it to rebuttal, and not a restatement, and not going into other issues. That might be hard, but just try.
No, it's easy. Attorney Nuff makes reference to longstanding tricks, or something like that. Here's the new trick. Before TPZ, when Chick-fil-A submitted its application and its 96-page drawing package, it said Chick-fil-A all over it. It had Chick-fil-A on every leaf of every page. And somehow, somehow, this time around, after its application was denied and dead, Phil Serone marches in and files an application for, quote, "exterior renovations." And there's a 96-page, and I'm, I thought that's the number, I don't know, but I know it was over 60 pages of planned drawings. Not one of them, now magically, not one of them, says Chick-fil-A. Not one of them. There's no indication of Chick-fil-A at all. And it's not until Friday, April 28th, and you have the, you have the news article, that Chick-fil-A confirms that they are going to be opening in Fairfield. Our point is that our appeal was brought within 30 days of our notice of the change of use that triggered these requirements. So, whatever Attorney Nuff has to say about my clients, my clients have to bring their appeal within 30 days of actual or constructive notice of the cause, and we do that. But he talks about dangerous precedent. There is no dangerous precedent, because my clients couldn't file that appeal, no one could file that appeal today. They filed within 30 days of getting notice. The danger is saying, and you can characterize it however you want, deceptive conduct, bad faith, whatever you want. They marched in with 96 pages of documents and nothing said Chick-fil-A on it. And it is a change of use. And if you sustain this appeal, the end result will not again necessarily be, will not necessarily be that there's not a Chick-fil-A, but the end result will be that Chick-fil-A has to do exactly what everyone else does in this instance, and the road goes through the Plan and Zoning Commission to make sure that it satisfies the requirements of our zoning regulations. And I have huge respect for staff, and this is not any sort of, this should not reflect on staff at all, because staff was presented with an application that didn't indicate a change of use, again, interior renovations for an existing restaurant, exterior renovations in addition of a handicap ramp, and not a single stitch of information that it was a change of use. And no one, and I noticed Attorney Nuff kind of dodged this question, no one can suggest that the Chick-fil-A use is the same as Joe's American. And the fact that it said "restaurant," there's a reason the regulations have three categories of restaurants, and they are different, and they are distinctive. And I can tell you, and I will testify, because I've been to Chick-fil-A as recently as 2:00, that it is a ro, pardon me, it is a robust takeout business, and it is not merely incidental to a sit-down restaurant where customers are served seated. And it is not merely incidental to a sit-down restaurant where customers are served seated at tables and/or at counters. This appeal is timely. The parties have standing. And we are asking you to make that finding initially with respect to this appeal.
And Attorney Green?
And I, just one more point. In terms of the law and case law, we've frequently, and I have suggested to this commission a, a number of times, that Attorney Nuff can quote the law, and I will quote the law. And ultimately, this commission does not interpret case law. And if this commission has questions about the applicable case law, then direct it to the town attorney, who I, is very good at this and can advise you as to what the, what the case law provides. Competing business, there was reference to a competing business. I am representing the garage and auto repair use across the street, which does not, to my knowledge, serve chicken sandwiches, and also the ice cream place, the building that has the deli and the Sunny Days. And those do not directly compete, well, Sunny Days does not directly compete, I suppose. So that's all I have.
So Avalon had a question on the view of Attorney Green, I believe.
This is, this goes kind of the quick of it, in, in my estimation. I've been kind of rough on both of you. The plans I'm looking at in front of me. Oh, I'm sorry. The, the, the plans had a lamp. This is what we're looking at, right? I'm not looking at the wrong thing.
Just one page.
Yeah, just one page. They're dated September thirty, twenty-twenty-two.
I don't have that document.
If you'd like to see it.
Sure.
I'll give it to you. I'd be happy to give you my copy.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, you're familiar with it.
No, I'm not.
Issued for a per, it says issued for a permit. The only question I want to know is if those were the drawings issued for the permit, and those are the drawings that the appeal are based on, that the, that the application was built on, is that not significant enough for you or your clients to have stated that this is different than Joe's? In other words, if someone had gone and looked at the plans or read the plans, is that not significant enough for you to have said that this is a change of use? Because if that's the case, then I'd say maybe there, I might understand an argument. But I'm looking at a plan that looks nothing like an open layout, sit-down restaurant. Seeing an appeal that takes place significantly later than that. So if it wasn't significant enough, is that, are you making the statement that the drawings that were submitted were not significant enough of a different use for you to appeal? And that something changed between then and April that brought about your appeal?
It is not the filing of the documents. It's notice to the appealing party. And the fact that interior renovations for an existing restaurant, I would suggest to you, does not fairly and reasonably trigger notice such that someone would go running to Town Hall to look at page, I don't even know what, of a ninety-six-page set of plans, such that they would be alerted that Chick-fil-A was coming to occupy the property. I suggest that that, I appreciate the question and I, and I, it's interesting, but I would suggest to you that, that you cannot reasonably find that the public would then be notified to go look at page seventy-four of a ninety-six-page submission based on a notice in the paper that says interior renovations to an existing restaurant. And that nothing, and not even staff, knew it was a Chick-fil-A. And that the town, town officials first announced in April. Town officials first announced in April and learned that it was a Chick-fil-A. So even, even town officials were unaware of it. And they're in Town Hall.
So, putting this all together, are you, are you saying that the user is defining the use? And that once we know the user, Chick-fil-A, that's gonna define the type, the use, the type of restaurant it is, and we only found that out in April?
It's not the user, it's the use.
Right, but the user here in this case kind of defines the use, because we all know.
Well, once.
What this type of, what this user.
Notice of that change of use, whether it was gonna be Chick-fil-A or Hardee's or McDonald's or I don't know who.
Exactly.
It's the use. It's not, it's not the fact that it's Chick-fil-A. We're using Chick-fil-A as shorthand.
It's the type of user.
Correct. It's the use, right.
So it's defining.
It's the category of user, to your. Yep.
I have one more question.
Sure.
So just procedurally, if, if this certificate of zoning compliance stands, do you still have the ability to then go to the zoning commission and request a cha, and require a change of use? Or?
You can apply, you, they can apply now for a special permit. They can apply for a special permit tomorrow.
You compel them to do that?
Yeah, you can. You can.
He can't.
He can. They can't, right.
Yep. The staff can do that. And that's, and again, it's a process. There'll be a hearing. It'll be fair and square and the commission will decide whether it's, whether what is proposed meets, you know, those, there's, there's a series of factors in the zoning regulations that you have to satisfy. Clearly, the parking is adequate, meets the standards and traffic and all those things, and appearance and signage and all those things that should be reviewed here. And then if they get their special permit, they get it. And fair and square. But just don't show up with ninety-six pages of documents that are, don't say Chick-fil-A when you've known it from the beginning. And that's something that this board should be mindful of. You can't, you just can't allow that conduct.
Any other questions? All right. He gets the last. And what we're gonna do now is we're gonna close this section of the hearing on seven fifty Post Road. And we're gonna bring it to a vote. I'm sorry, ladies and gentlemen, that moves things a little differently, but this is a, a long application. It has two parts to it. One, we have to decide first, and we are allowed to decide whether we have jurisdiction of a matter that is being presented to us. So we have to decide that first before we can get to the merits. And we don't want to be clouded with the merits while we're deciding a jurisdictional issue. So I'm going to bring a vote now. I'm not gonna do this under each other application, so I'm sorry, but that's the way we do this. The way I've done this on a few occasions. But those will have to wait to the end for our voting. But I think this is the most efficient way to handle this, because we've done it this way a few times since I've been chairman on different matters. So what I'm gonna like to do is entertain a motion to accept jurisdiction with an indication that the appeal is timely. I'll entertain a motion to accept jurisdiction that the appeal is timely. Will someone move?
I will stand to hand a motion that the appeal is timely.
Motion to accept.
Motion to accept.
To accept jurisdiction.
Jurisdiction that the appeal is timely.
All right, thank you. Do a second.
Thanks.
Thank you. Obviously, we need that to discuss it. All right. So that's keep in mind. This is a motion to accept jurisdiction. So when I call for the vote, and I'll repeat this later, so there's no confusion. When I call for a vote, this, a yes vote means that this appeal, that Attorney Green is correct, that the appeal is timely. A no vote means Attorney Green is not correct, and Attorney Nuff is correct, that the appeal is not timely. So no, not timely, yes, yes, timely. All right? So let's have some discussion about it here.
I'll say this, as I kind of stated it before. Based on what our job is, I can't fault an applicant for being like, I don't know if I want to say the word clever, but, you know, they, they went in, they filed an application based on the rules. I would like some measure of clarification on whether they were required to disclose the use or intended type of restaurant that they were, that they were filing the application for. Because I believe that that would significantly affect what would have been known about the application by either the public or any respective parties. But if that is not required as a matter, of course, in the application, then, I mean, it, it seems fairly academic. Plans were submitted. If you go and look at the plans, if you're so concerned about a, a location and what has been previously proposed there, and you see that someone is going to go there, I would think that it would behoove you to go and have a learned look at what was being proposed. And the notice would have served significant, the notice of those plans would have served to incite that, if you will.
Well, Brian, I, your, your question, you know, and I did, I always let questions come in, even if you might just look at me like, why am I letting another question come in? Was, was very good, because I think it answers your own question. That we have applications that don't identify who is actually gonna be there, live there, use it all the time. It is the application as to what they're doing, and that's what the building department is looking at. The problem that I have with it, and Attorney Nuff made the point, is if we consider, you know, who the actual user is and the method of business, the appeal period never starts.
Right.
And that's problematic. Our statute, there's three ways. Receipt of the notice by the person that wants to appeal. Publication, or publication, or actual constructive notice. Publication. The publication complies. We can't sit there and, and in my opinion, in my thought, it, have an appeal that goes so far after because the publication was, was accurate.
Could I ask a question?
Yeah.
So when the application was made, did that, was there a place on the application to distinguish between the three types of restaurants? Is that part of the application?
No, no. It's, they're, they're plans of what they're looking at and whether they need a variance on something.
So the form doesn't say I'm under this type of restaurant or this type of restaurant and this type of restaurant?
No, they're, they're plans, building documents. So Brian asked, there's a question. When you look at this, and we can't sit there and say Chick-fil-A is a different restaurant when it doesn't, you know, that it's gonna be the exact same restaurant, but it doesn't have a drive-through. It doesn't have a drive-through.
So I, I think it comes down to, if, if, I don't care who it is, if Chick-fil-A, Burger King, Chili's, whoever they are, submitted an application for a restaurant, and they did so utilizing these plans, then it's, and anyone can correct me if I'm wrong, it's up to a, a reading of those plans by staff to A, determine whether it constitutes a change of use, if they're even supposed to do that. Or, and if they are supposed to do that, did they? And second, is it a, is it a reasonable use of the space? I don't care who the person is. If it follows the existing use, then it's, then it's academic. But if it did not, then there was an error. However, was that error caught in time and was it appealed in time, I think is the only question we're allowed to ask.
Well, yes, you're, you're, you clouded it a bit by going over to the, the, the application and what's in there. We have a statute. We don't have our own regulations about when to appeal.
Right.
We gotta follow the Connecticut general statute. Thirty days from receipt of the information by the person, the applicant, who wants to appeal in hand. Or publication, or actual or constructive notice. So in situations when we don't have a publication, you need to have one of the others. And there's a lot more wiggle room in there. We don't have wiggle room on this. It's publication. We have statute of limitations and thirty days for a reason. And that's what we're looking at.
But the application, this application that was filed last fall was for a restaurant like Joe's. Otherwise, it'd be a change of use, right?
I, no, I, I don't think you can say that. It has to be a restaurant like Joe's.
Well, a restaurant, one of those.
There's, there's three permitted uses in there. And one of them had a drive-through and they went to TP and Z.
Yeah.
And that was denied. This does not have a drive-through.
Okay. But the, in this case, the user defines the use, whether it's, and we didn't know what the, who the user was until April.
Well, a user might have different uses. If a user has a drive-through, certainly there's cars that are served.
Right.
Okay? Certainly, there's people are going out there.
Right.
But I've been to Chick-fil-A's as well, maybe not as much as Attorney Green, but I've been to Chick-fil-A's without drive-throughs.
Right, because that's right, and?
And people walk in and people sit down and eat, and some people go up to the counter and leave. And they're parking, and then they go and they leave.
And they also have curbside takeaway like half the restaurants in town.
A res, okay, this is maybe off the topic, but does, did Joe's have waitstaff that waited on tables? And so that's the assumption that this is, when this was filed for, it would be the same kind of restaurant, right?
Well, I don't think we can go there because a restaurant serves food. A restaurant, a bar, there's different liquor permits. There's different, I mean.
But we have in our, in our regulations, we have three types of restaurants. And the assumption is that the restaurant is the kind of restaurant like that would have, you know, waitstaff and that was their primary operation.
It says restaurant. It doesn't, the, the application doesn't say a restaurant like Joe's is a restaurant.
Right, so it could be any of those three. It could be any of those three.
It could, a restaurant could be any of those three.
Any of those three. So it was murky from the beginning, right?
I don't think it's murky. You look here, does this look like a, a weighted service?
No, that looks like.
Well, I don't know. There's a hundred and fifty, there's a hundred and fifty-one seats. I don't know how many, how many seats are at Joe's?
I don't know, but this certainly doesn't look like a weighted table service.
Right, so it's different. It's a different kind of restaurant than what was there before.
Which, which is exactly my point, Jane, is that we have appeals. Notice, if you're concerned about it, you have to go down there.
Yeah.
And you have to look at that, and you have to make an inquiry. Because we can't sit there and extend this, this statute forever.
I'm only gonna ask one question, based on the three, based on the three things that you, your nameplate went over. So based on the three criteria, the three that you listed, does constr, what's, what's the, the constructive notice?
Actual or constructive notice, meaning you should have known based upon.
You should have known. So.
With your, with your question, right, you have constructive.
You have, you have constructive based on what's in the plans. I think that fits. And I, I, all I can do is express my displeasure with the manner in which this was delivered to the town and, but I can't fault the creativity. And I think they met.
I think.
Unfortunately, I think, unfortunately, I think they met their requirements. I think that they presented it in a way, and they did so in a timely manner. It was publica, it was publicized. I would like to think that the constructive part of it is they came out and said what they were gonna do. And they were, you know, they were, they were forward with what their intent was. However, if you were, if Attorney Green's clients were so concerned, I would think that any application gone forward in that space or at that address would have warranted them going down and saying, what's this gonna be?
There's, there's three, the first of the three that you mentioned as far as how to be noticed, that was direct notice to the, appout to the.
The people that are, yes.
That were appealing. By this point, were Joel's people appealing or they weren't appealing yet?
Well, direct notice to like the neighbors.
Right, okay.
So it's not people.
Did they, did they get direct, they didn't get direct notice? Did they get direct, they didn't get direct notice from neighbors? They only had the publication, only had the one of the three?
It's or, or, or.
Or, or, or. They chose the most...
Correct.
Secret. Another question I have is, one, somewhere in this document, it said, change of use within twelve point four requires a special permit from the town planning and zoning commission. Is that accurate?
That's one of their arguments, but we're not...
Right. Is that...
That is a merit.
Or is that...
That's a merit argument.
Okay. So, it's not a, that's not a documented, you must apply for a change of use within that, but if you're changing for those three elements of twelve point four, it's not required, they should be.
We're not here and there, we're not there. We're at eight point, eight dash seven of the statutes, not our regulations, a little bit higher level than our own regulations.
So, the notice, thirty days from the notice was the notice given...
The publication.
The public notice was given October eleventh and December seventh.
Correct.
But then there was a more direct notice on October twenty-fifth disclosing who the applicant was.
April, April.
April, April twenty-fifth.
Identifying the name.
Right. And then the applicant, then the appeal was filed within a month of that notice.
But the statute...
So, that's not the notice? The statute says that's not the...
It talks about the publication, the required publication under eight dash three. That's what the statute's referring to, not...
So, the April twenty...
Not a newsflash that the town may post.
Got it.
That's not, that's not the statute.
No, I understand. So, the April twenty-fifth notification, that, it can't be thirty days from that, the statute says there's thirty days from the written publication in October and December twenty-two.
That's what I believe, because eight dash seven is referring to eight dash three, because that's the notice that is being required.
And it's one more question. Is the only, is it only your department that would propose that there might be a change of use necessary and would require the zoning commission to hear it, or is that something that Joe's clients can, after the fact, request hearing on that?
It would be the determination of our staff, to say, you need...
Staff first. You send people to zoning commission.
We're gonna go to the staff.
Yep.
Okay. These aren't good. You need to get a variance for this section, or, no, you need to get a special permit.
Right, got it.
And they hand it back to them, and then, and go, and so, and so, that decision, that decision was made...
At the staff's.
Back before it was signed off on, because they wouldn't sign off if they made that decision. They made that decision, that got published, we're a hundred and sixty-four days from the latest publication.
Like, looking at, looking at these plans, not necessarily knowing, understood, not necessarily knowing it's Chick-fil-A, but you're looking at these plans, it could be Chick-fil-A, it could be McDonald's, it could be Burger King, it could be, it could be Kentucky Fried Chicken. You're looking at these, and you're saying, on your, in your office, that doesn't require a change.
That's what they would have to do, that's their job.
And that's what happened.
And that's what they did.
Yeah, they're saying they shouldn't have happened.
And the appeal is to reverse that decision.
Got it.
At that, made at that time.
Can I ask another question? So, Jill Bergarm makes a very good point here, so, which is that, it was, it was, that the notices were defective because staff did not ask if it was a change of use. They didn't ask specifically if it was a change of use, they just assumed it was the thing. Did you ask?
I, well, this is our discussion.
I mean, I just, okay, that's a rhetorical question. We don't know if they, you know...
It's, well, okay.
Are we not allowed to ask?
But the determination...
Right, but if it's defective, if they didn't do their job, then it's a defective.
Okay, all right, let me do the hypothetical. If they didn't do their job, back before they signed off, are we more than thirty days from that date?
Yes, but we didn't...
Okay, eight dash seven. They didn't do their job in August of two thousand twenty-two, or in October of two thousand twenty-two. That is your question, are we more than thirty days from that?
Yes, but we didn't know that it was just that, we didn't, we, we only knew who the applicant was.
But you could only appeal from the time of where you're claiming that an error was made, or the publication was made.
But we didn't know about the error.
And the appeal doesn't talk about an error, the appeal talks about receipt of the decision, publication of the decision, and actual or constructive notice.
Kevin, are we allowed to ask a question?
Not during this.
But if the notice itself is defective, how can you...
You have, you have the thirty days, unfortunately.
But you don't know it's defective until you find out who the user is, because the user is defining the use.
But you know what? That's what the statute limitations is, Jane.
But Jane, I'm gonna, Jane, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask you this, because I, unfortunately, I think we agree that there is a change of use to this building, I believe that there should be something that happens. However, however, and I, sometimes I don't like, whatever it is, I have to be, you're an architect.
Yeah.
You look at these plans, if someone's gonna go build a building next to your building, or you represent any of the, any of the apartments here, adjacent to these, there's been an application for that property once before, there's notice that there is a new application, doesn't matter who it is, doesn't matter what it is. And this is where I think they, you know, whatever, or not, whatever the case is, they submitted a series of plans, and a set of plans, that someone like an attorney, or a builder, or someone, would have known that this is a change of use, and they could have filed based on those drawings. It's, I'm playing the worst side of devil's advocate on my own part here, but we have a responsibility as a board to say, I mean, I'm not an architect, I've worked for builders, I've worked in construction, but I read this and I see a change, and the first thing I would have done is thrown up a flag that said, you guys can't do this, here's my appeal. I don't care what happened after, what happened in April, I can't, I'm not required, I'm required not to see what happened in April, I'm required, so I'm understanding this correctly, so please, God, I'm wrong. And my understanding of this issue is that their application was done, whether in good faith, or whatever the case is, their application was done within the constraints of the law, they were, they provided notice within the constraints of the law, and it was an abject failure of anyone who would, who could have possibly had a concern with those plans, to not go and review them, and then make their, make their appeal based on whatever plans were available. I don't care if they were a thousand pages long, if it concerned me so greatly that my business was gonna be affected, I would have read a thousand pages worth of plans. And that's the responsibility of anyone who has a problem with any application. If I wanna go do something to my house, and anyone in the entire town, or especially within a block, has a problem with it, I have to answer their questions as long as they ask those questions within thirty days, and I've given them every opportunity.
I think that we also have to rely on staff to do some of that work for us. That's their job. And I think it was a defective notice.
I, I don't, I don't even disagree with you, I think it was, and...
We don't know what conversations went on.
I, I can't, but that's not our...
At the administration's level, we don't know any of that. All we know is today, we have the opportunity to bring this back into the public forum, because we all know what our fellow Fairfielders would like to see happen or not happen. We have an opportunity.
But that's, but that's, that exists outside, that exists outside, that exists outside of law, which is unfortunate.
I, I agree, but it's, but it's, okay, but that's why we're having this conversation, is because we can say that this, the notices were, were, were to use as defective.
I, well, I disagree with that. I disagree with that. The notice, and they looked at the plans, and they determined that it didn't need a special permit, and that it fit within the use, and they issued their decision. If someone wanted to challenge that, if someone wanted to challenge that decision, they needed to do it within thirty days. This is a challenge to that decision.
Right, but the decision was made on, sort of murky grounds.
And that was the time to do that, was within thirty days. Not within a hundred and sixty-four days, or, or, or two hundred days. The time to do that, whether you, would you believe it was made murkily, or based upon improper, you need to do it within thirty days. That's what the statute of limitations, it's, it's a time limit, but it's a, it's a limitations limit that we're bound by.
But until we knew who the user was, we couldn't have made that determination.
The unfortunate part is, it doesn't matter who it was.
Yeah, I think that's, it's the type, it's the type of user, not particular user by name, it's the type of user.
But this is the point, and I, I wanna, I can't stress enough to you how much I agree with you.
Okay.
Okay? Unfortunately, and anyone on this commission, anyone on this board can tell you how flexible that I have been with, you know, what we can hear, what we can't hear, what might be a, what might be a hardship, or what might not be, because we have to use some common sense. The only thing I have to rely on here is a statute and my common sense, and my, the statute tells me that whether staff was right, wrong, or indifferent to what happened, whatever happened on a political level or anything else, I'm screwed now, because counsel or anyone else who might have wanted to bring an appeal, didn't do so within a specific time, because, again, I've worked in restaurants for seventeen years, I've worked in construction for ten, I read these plans, and I understand that they are different than Joe's. I read these plans, and I understand that they're not the same use. What I don't get to do is argue when the clock starts or stops because Chick-fil-A's attorneys, or Chick-fil-A's architect, were smart enough to take the name off of the application, and said, this is what we're going to build. They didn't hide what they were building. They said, this is what we're going to build, these are our plans, and here they are. Come read them, come look at them, and I, I'm as upset about it as anyone, because I don't agree with them. I know there's a change of use here. I don't get to use my knowledge of a change of use, I don't get to use my expertise or my knowledge of looking at this and saying that it's different, because there was an abject failure to abide by the time, by the date. I can't, I can't, I can't hear an argument...
The issue is, is not whether there is a different use or not, and the issue might be at the merits, whether it is a different use according to our regulations, okay? Every restaurant uses a restaurant different than another restaurant, okay? So, we keep on talking about a change of use, it's a different type of a restaurant, it's still a restaurant. The issue has to come back to the jurisdictional and focus on that, instead of putting cart before the horse, and talk about what restaurant was. A decision was made by our staff in August and October. Whether it was right or wrong is not relevant to this decision that we're making right now.
If we make the decision, and then it just ends right there, we can't go on to the next conversation.
Because we're bound by a, some little thing called the Connecticut General Statute, that says that you need to do the appeal within thirty days, and it gives three time periods that you need to appeal from. And when you have a publication, that is controlling, to me, because you have a publication. So, you're discussing all of these other things that are tangential, it is, in my thought, pretty straightforward. You go from a date that's in a statute that was done pursuant to another statute, and you need to appeal within thirty days of that.
Even if you don't have correct information?
Because that's, to get there, you gotta appeal within thirty days.
Yeah, that was a question, one question. So, Jane made a point, like, you know, people didn't know what this is about, but, am I correct that, seeing that notice, anybody in this town, in either town, your clients could have said, huh, seven twenty post joke, uh-oh, something's happening there, could have gone down to zoning, looked at the plan, and said, hey, wait a minute, this shouldn't be approved, because it's, they're changing use, but that never happened, right?
Correct, and, and that's why I said Brian's point was good, because you had the opportunity to look at, and if you wanted to look at it, you only have a limited amount of time. That's what our statute has put in play.
And if someone was aware that this, this was a, a, an area of contention, a seven twenty post joke, because Chick-fil-A had been...
Been, been...
Sorry, that was empty, I wasn't looking. They would have seen that, that address, and said, oh, my, let me, let me go talk to planning and zoning and see what's going on here.
But they didn't.
But they didn't, within the thirty days.
And to find out, Jane, whether there was an error made, you need to do it within thirty days.
Thirty days.
And that's what our statute tells us. So, any other discussion? Okay, or bring it, yes?
Never mind, never mind.
Bring it to a vote. So...
Remind us again.
As I indicated, a yes is that the appeal is timely, and that we go on to the merits. A no is that the appeal is not timely. So, Katie, you know, I start with you.
I know, and I have to say, I real, I, I hate to do it, but I say no.
No.
Yes.
No.
No. The appeal is not timely. Our next item is number one, and that is six, let me wait a second. Just remember, wait, wait till the end of my call, before you start throwing things around. Number one is six eighty-nine Uncle Road, map one seven nine, parcel four five, petition of town of Fairfield for variance of zoning regulations, section five point two point two, to increase the height of light stations from forty feet, proposing seventy feet and eighty feet. Permission to install four light stations at seventy feet, and two light stations at eighty feet. Premises A zone, Calgary, presenting for us?
Thank you, Anthony Calgary, Director of Parks and Recreation. Thank you to the board for hearing this today. As you just heard, I've been here before, you're looking for a variance on the lights for our proposed turf project at Roger Ludlow Middle School. Just to give you a brief background on it, and I'll, I'll keep it brief, I do, you guys, a large agenda, which turns a pretty long one here. The Ludlow Turf Project is something, is part of our master plan, that we put together back in twenty twenty-two, ultimately, but we had been working on this project for a couple of years before that. We went through the full funding process in May of twenty-two, and we've got approval from all the funding bodies for a little over four million dollars, to put a turf field with lights at Ludlow Middle School. Why is this important to us to have the lights? Essentially, it increases the number of hours that we can use that field, really in the shoulder season, I'm only really talking, it's about five hundred extra hours that we're able to pick up from mid-September through Thanksgiving, and then your April first through even Memorial Day, not even really the summer months where we're looking at, but we can get about five hundred extra hours. What does that do for us? Well, again, it gets, it eases the bottleneck that we have right now on our field, where we've got multiple teams that, leagues that can't get field space in a timely fashion. This specific project will help out our high school sports program immensely. We won't have any issues with this field where it rains and they can't practice, they could now stay on the field and practice. If they need to play a game under the lights, they'll be able to do that. This field will be lined for a baseball field, and again, this has been a point of contention that we really wanted to make sure we were able to include a baseball field, a full-size baseball field on this location. We'll have a full-size softball field, which will also house a little league team, we need to have little league over there, or potentially our Fairfield Red Storm, which is our adaptive baseball league. But it'll also have a football field, your soccer field, boys and girls lacrosse, field hockey, you name it, we're much able to put it within this location, under these lights. And again, picking up all those additional hours is really what we're looking for. So, again, that's why I'm here before you today. I'm gonna turn it over to Kurt Lowenstein, who's our consultant from Land Tech, he could talk about more specifics than I can.
Thanks, Anthony. For the record, Kurt Lowenstein, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with Land Tech, offices in Westport, Connecticut. As Anthony said, we were hired by the town to put together a full new master plan of this area. It's an existing natural grass field, and they would like to switch it to a full artificial turf, multi-sport field, that would include lights. Anthony can tell you, we've been through many, many iterations of this plan to get to where we are today. It'll incorporate six new light pole stations... Um, it'll incorporate six new light pole stations, uh, four of which will be at seventy feet and two of which will be at eighty feet. The two on the end here, this pole here, and this pole here will be the eighty footers and the balance will be the seventy footers. Um, we do comply with a zero spillage of foot candles at all property lines. Um, the ninety-five is located to the south of us, um, and Uncle Art to the east of us. We do have zero, um, like I said, at all the property lines. Um, the lights are sized appropriately to provide the optimal lighting for the fields. This isn't Yankee Stadium lighting by any means, but it meets the minimum standards for high schools. So, we really kinda keep this as tight as we can. We haven't tried to go above and beyond because we do understand, um, you know, with the ninety-five and we do have neighbors around. So, um, we've done our best to provide a field here that the town, um, hopefully be able to use for generations going forward. Um, other than that, you know, any questions about the details of the lighting, light poles, anything like that, I'm happy to answer, but that's kind of a whole ball of ass.
Calgary, do you have more to add or are we gonna go to questions?
No, we can go right to questions.
All right, all right, thank you. Uh, Jane?
I don't know, this is a question for you or for the town renovation, but how, what's from, at what time of night would these lights be turned off? Is that part of it?
Yeah, I, I could definitely speak to that. Uh, typically, we were gonna follow the rest of the field to have lights right now.
That, okay. And that's what the rest of the town?
Yeah, uh, we have, obviously, we have lights at both high schools already, Fairfield, Ludlow High School, Fairfield Ward High School, and then we have them down at our South Pine Creek Recreation Area where adults softball plays.
Any other questions? Okay. Uh, is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of this application? We did have emails, uh, several emails that came in, uh, supporting it, uh-
Just a father, two young girls in-
You have to come up, if you want to talk, you got a podium.
We're here just as a father of two, uh, young girls in the town and both place boards, there's a tremendous amount of shortage of fields. This will definitely help re- relieve the problem and I think we'd well serve the town moving forward on this.
All right, give us your name.
Oh, John Early, E A R L Y.
Sure.
From here.
Okay, sure.
Uh, Courtney Bradley, I'm just here to speak on behalf of adding these fields and the lights to the fields. I have, um, two, two boys, one who has already graduated, one who will be a senior, or is a senior. Um, so, our benefit of them personally is probably going to be very minimal at all, but I can tell you that, um, we have needed a baseball field, we need more fields with lights, we need more turf fields, so I'm just here to support it. Thank you.
Anyone else, um, yes, go ahead.
Um, my name is Kristen Frame, um, I come from with Courtney. I have three boys who play, um, many sports and having traveled to other towns now being a high school sport and seeing what's out there, we are, I, I now know what people have been talking about the last few years, um, about our shortage of fields in Fairfield, there's no question that, um, very difficult to get field space, et cetera. And so, I, I do think the lights are necessary to maximize the number of hours and alleviate some of the issues we're having with, with fields.
Thank you. Yeah.
Chris Timniak, um, I also have two young boys, my kids are incredibly active in sports, uh, we need a field like this. Uh, I live in the neighborhood, the lights won't be an issue. We already have Ludlow, uh, high school lights really close. This is even tuck closer to the highway where we have highway lights, so I don't think this is an issue at all.
Totally, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone that has opposition to the application? Yes, sir, all right.
Hi, Ted Luxinger, five twenty-nine Cascade Drive, Fairfield, Connecticut, oh six eight two five. And, uh, thanks for the opportunity to register my opinion in this matter. After reviewing the supporting documentation, I fail to see any facts that support the need to provide a zoning variance. The benefits enumerated are speculative at best. I worry about a rush to decision before a careful examination of the need for all concerned, the athletes, the neighbors, and the wildlife that is currently under extreme stress. Referring to the conservation P O C town goals, Fairfield will be a sustainable community that safeguards its natural environment, built environments and the quality of life for residents to ensure they benefit current and future generations. I don't see this as being consistent with that goal. Natural features and resources, including the town's wetlands, which this is adjacent to, it's in an upland review area of the wetlands, so it's gonna require a wetlands permit. Um, watercourses, open space, beaches, and habitats for wildlife. Air and the Long Island Sound will be restored, protected, and maintained so they support a high-quality environment and are available for future generations. So, my position is very simple, I don't disagree with the need for field and the need for lights. All the other lights in town, are they forty feet ho- high?
No.
Okay.
They're not.
So, they're, they're eighty feet, they're seventy and eighty feet high? Okay. Um, I'd like to see the facts as to why that height is necessary and I'd also like to know if they ever went through dark skies for compliance because they have lighting proposals and lighting plans that are consistent with dark skies requirements. You talked about no spillage, there's also light temperature, there's the timing of the lighting, um, there are a number of things that should be done, and you are next door to the Birdcraft Museum. So, you're next door to a wildlife sanctuary and you're putting more lights in. To me, I would say, hold off, get the due diligence done, find out what dark skies has to say about this lighting proposal and see if there are any alternatives that may, A, save the town some money and B, be more consistent with protecting wildlife. Thank you very much.
Uh, is there anyone else who would speak in opposition?
Hi, good afternoon, Amy Barno, Fairfield, Connecticut. I'm the Director of the Connecticut Audubon Society Fairfield Region. Um, and I'm also the mom of three kids, I, who are athletic and have used our, um, very limited, uh, fields. So, I have a unique role, or position, I should say, of, um, being in full support of additional fields. Uh, I absolutely believe we need them in the town and, uh, I am really thrilled to see that we're investing in that. I know there's a shortage and I'm very happy to see that. So, kudos to the project. I wanna echo, um, just that in this particular space, there's a real importance of, um, being mindful, which I know you guys are, we are, you are, this particular space is literally across the street from the very first private songbird sanctuary in the United States, which is the Birdcraft Museum and Sanctuary. Um, and despite being adjacent to I ninety-five, we have over a hundred and thirty-five bird species that have been tagged and, and found in Birdcraft. It's a really, really special space. And there's a lot happening at the state level right now to manage extraneous nighttime lights, which are, um, as a side note, almost a billion birds die a year by, um, extraneous nighttime lights that disrupt their migratory patterns and they also, um, unfortunately lead them into buildings. And so, we're actually working on that project right now, the state of Connecticut's doing a lot of work on that project. And I would just encourage you to maybe make as part of a condition for this that, and I'd be happy to work with you on it, to make sure that we are looking at the right lighting. As Ted said, there are different bulbs that can be used, they just need to be faced down. There's things that we can do to mitigate the impact it will have on birds and other wildlife. And I, it's, there's some really easy fixes and I think, um, it would be an appropriate thing to do, just make sure that, um, as a neighbor to Birdcraft Museum, that, um, it's win-win for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Barno. Anyone else, uh, wants to speak in opposition? Calgary, so you can, uh, or Lowenstein, uh, whoever goes can address the comments in opposition. Probably more in your wheelhouse than-
Yeah, not a problem. Um, so, we are before you today for a variance of height. Um, the dark sky initiative, I believe, and Matt can correct me, I believe is written into the regs that the darks, they need to be dark sky compliant, any type of lighting that we do do. Um, when we get to the P and Z Commission and the Wetlands Commission, I know this will come up again, the lights that we would propose would be compliant with that. Um, as I'm standing here before you today, I'm, you know, these are the heights that we're looking for as we go through the further approval processes. We can certainly work with your organization to, um, to ensure that we're not causing any adverse impact to any local wildlife. Um, like I said, the, the lighting system that we're using is kind of the minimum to meet the needs of the, uh, of the field usage. Uh, like I said, we're not doing the Yankee Stadium type of deal here, this is high school level lighting. Um, you know, it is an area that's already has a lot of lighting around it now, so I don't, I don't feel that will be adversely impacted, but again, just to reiterate, we will be willing to work with you guys on that as we move through the process.
Yeah, all right, thank you. Uh, and questions on, uh, any of that rebuttal?
One question. Um, so, are the lights on only when there's a game or are they on every night, even if there's no game?
Uh, they would be, when there, the field is being used. If the field wasn't being used, they wouldn't need to be on.
Like, they have to have a timer or something that's going on?
They, they can be on timers, but there's programming that can be put into the lights themselves where they can-
The town Recreation Department-
Exactly, I would imagine.
Yeah, if we weren't using the field, the lights would not be on.
Did you have a?
Nah.
Okay, I'm gonna close, you had enough questions there first? Okay, I'm gonna close, uh, the hearing on six eighty-nine Uncle Road. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Um, our next item that we have is number two, that's five forty-three Old Mill Road, map one seven seven, parcel one seven three, addition of Chris Timniak for variance of zoning regulations, section five point two point four point three to reduce the sideline setback for an accessory structure from ten feet, currently fourteen point three feet, proposing seven point eight feet. Permission to construct a two-story, one-car garage, premises R two zone. Timniak, go ahead.
Evening, thank you for allowing me to come tonight to, uh, speak here on behalf of this project. As you just referenced, my wife and I are seeking a variance, um, which is necessary to reconstruct our existing garage. Our existing garage is failing, um, I have a cracked concrete floor which is uplifting, I have to replace the roof. In order to do accommodate a, um, a two-car garage, there's gonna be an eighteen-foot door, I need to shift my house over about two feet, four inches into the current setback, which is set at ten feet. Um, due to the layout of my existing driveway and how it abuts my house, that's the, the necessary reason to, to move it over. Um, it's not feasible, uh, I tried many different architectural ways to do it. It's not feasible to build, um, the proposed garage you have there under the current layout without seeking the variance. Um, the lot and the existing structure conform to the, uh, existing requirements for the R two zone. The existing house was constructed in nineteen thirty-nine, I believe the garage was also done around then. There are no wetlands located on the site, however, the western portion of the property is located within the theme of flood zone X for the five-hundred-year flood. The proposed accessory structure is being constructed, constructed outside the limits of the designated flood zone. Um, uh, a zoning board of the field may grant my variance, the variance will not affect substantially the comprehensive zoning plan, adherence to carrying out all the general, uh, purpose of the zoning plan. In this case, the requested variance will not affect the comprehensive plan in what was proposed as an accessory structure in the R two zone, um, complying in all, uh, respects with the requirements of the R two zone that, um, so, my current hardship is, uh, I can't, I need, need the two and a half, uh, two and a half feet so that I can slide over and create more living space for my family, uh, having a second floor, uh, storage slash, uh, hangout space and widening the garage so I can fit, uh, two cars in there. In summary, it's a modest garage, uh, it's attractive in design and harmonious with the character of the neighborhood. It will provide us with a modest amount of additional living area, allowing us to remain in the home with more square footage. Uh, it will represent a significant architectural enhancement to the property benefiting all the surrounding neighbors. Um, I do have, uh, a sign-off from all my affected neighbors, I was told to bring to the meeting today. Pretty much it.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up, we'll have it as part of the record. Is there any questions? Yeah. That's my job, are there any questions?
Everybody's an expert.
So, a legal hardship has to do with the property, can't be like your family needs to, your hardship to make it work? Is your hardship the specific to the property?
All right, um, uh, uh, the applicant, uh, will, uh, so- So, uh, I guess the specific thing is to offset, um, offset the, um, lack of living space I have. The way I currently have it set up, I'm not able to fit any cars, the wider cars into the garage, so I need to create a wider garage door. Uh, to do that, I'd have to shift the entire house over. I don't have any space to architecturally accommodate that two and a half feet. Does that answer your question?
No.
Okay.
It has to be the property itself not letting you need it for, for cars and your toilets or do that. What about the property itself, um, you know, brings the hardship?
All right, so, I have, due to the layout of the existing structure, the existing site topography is not feasible to build the proposed accessory structure in another location on the property.
Okay, so, with the, with the topography, what's your hardship?
Yeah, so, the way it comes down, we looked at a whole different, uh, bunch of designs, moving a lot of earth and creating retaining walls, uh, so, um, I have the topography.
Okay, that's, okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, uh, Harry, no further questions? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Five forty-three Old Mill Road. Is there anyone in opposition to the application, five forty-three Old Mill Road? You always get nervous when someone gets up.
Yeah.
Great timing, Charles. Great timing.
No, here's your no.
Yeah, of all people.
There is no, uh, opposition, uh, and every, all the questions have been answered. I'm gonna close the hearing on five forty-three Old Mill Road. Thank you.
Oh, that was scary.
All right, uh- Number-
Of course.
Number three, eight eighty-three Black Rock Turnpike, uh, for, Turnpike, can't speak anymore. Uh, map seven nine, parcel three two zero, petition of eight eighty-three Black Rock Turnpike LLC for a variance of zoning regulations, section twenty-eight point six point five to reduce the required parking spaces by five, permission to establish a medical use to the second floor, premises N D D zone. Travis Patrick?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, my name is Bill Fitzpatrick, I'm an attorney in Fairfield, the law firm of Russo and Rizzo, offices at ten South Wood Hill Road. I'm here this afternoon representing the applicant, Westport Place LLC, contract purchaser of the property at eight eighty-three Black Rock Turnpike. Property in question contains a two-story office building located at the corner of Jennings Road and Black Rock Turnpike. Office located in the neighborhood-designed business district, contains twenty-one thousand one hundred and three square feet. Property has been occupied by the president owner for the last twenty-one years, been used primarily for legal offices. The principal of the applicant, Westport Place LLC, is Dr. Jekyll Patterson, who is seeking to relocate her naturopathic medical practice to the second floor of the existing building. Majority of the second floor will be Dr. Patterson's main practice, Fairfield Family Health. The remainder of the second floor will be occupied by Dr. Patterson's supplement entity, Fairfield Family Health Wellness Supplements LLC. No sale of chicken of any kind is promoted on site. To accomplish this change in use, the applicant is requesting a variance of section twenty-eight point six point five of the zoning regulations to reduce the required parking for a medical use by five parking spaces in conjunction with the change of use for an existing second floor from office to medical. Test for the granting of a variance is set forth in the Smith case, one seventy-four Connecticut three twenty-six, which states, regarding hardship under Connecticut General Statutes eight dash six parents three, the local zoning board may grant a variance where two basic conditions are met. conditions are met. One, the variance is shown not to affect substantially the comprehensive zoning plan, and two, adherence to the strict letter of the zoning regulation is shown to cause unusual hardship unnecessary to the carrying out of the general purpose of the zoning plan. First part of the test, substantial effect on the comprehensive plan is satisfied here with the proposed use of medical office is a permitted use in the neighborhood-designed business district. The second part of the test, adherence to the strict letter of the zoning regulations is shown to cause unusual hardship unnecessary to the carrying out of the purpose of the zoning plan is satisfied here, I would submit by several factors. Primary factor for the board to consider in evaluating this request is the fact that the parking demand for the proposed medical use is significantly reduced when compared to a traditional medical practice. The zoning regulations require one parking space for every two hundred and fifty gross square feet of office, one parking space for every two hundred gross square feet of medical, more for medical than for office. The use of the first floor of the building, which contains forty-four eighty-eight gross square feet per the A two survey, is office and will be utilized as office in the future. The past use of the second floor, which contains four thousand six hundred and fifty-seven square feet per the A two, was office. Dr. Patterson's naturopathic practice will encompass approximately four thousand square feet on the second floor, is medical in nature, and we will deem the separate supplement entity on the second floor to be deemed medical as well for parking calculation purposes. The present office use of the entire building, just over ninety-one hundred square feet, requires thirty-seven spaces, that's requirement of one space for two fifty set forth in the regs. First floor requires eighteen spaces, second floor nineteen. The proposed medical use of the second floor, forty-six fifty-seven square feet, requires twenty-four parking spaces at the rate of one space per two hundred. The first floor parking requirement stays the same. That office will, that space will remain being used as office. The total parking requirement for the building is then forty-two spaces, or an increase of five spaces over the present requirement for the building with office on both floors. Should be noted that the parking provided on site is thirty-two spaces. This is likely due to a change in the required parking for office in the zoning regulations. Zoning regulations in the past required one parking space for every four hundred square feet of second floor office use. Again, most important element for the board to consider is the nature of Dr. Patterson's practice. The patients are seen for visits running from thirty to ninety minutes. Acupuncture appointments are scheduled for sixty minutes. Fair family Fairfield Health will see approximately twenty-five hundred patients a year versus say, an average traditional medical practice, which will see a multiple of that figure. Additionally, thirty-five percent, thirty-five percent of the Fairfield Family Health patient base is telemedicine remote, meaning the patients do not come on-site. I should also note there are no changes to the exterior or the footprint of the existing building. None of that is proposed. As detailed above, the nature of the practice of the applicant reduces the onsite parking requirements and warrants approval of this application. An additional factor, a little off the mark, for the board to consider is that the commercial office market is soft. Approximately twenty-five percent of Fairfield County office space is vacant. Buildings such as this, and I owned one at eleven fifty Post Road for a while, they're of a certain size, they're just more difficult to sell because of their size and style. They're made to be purchased by owner occupants. There aren't that many owner occupants around. This building has been listed for sale for two years. Empty commercial buildings are not good for the town of Fairfield. Here you have a transaction that's good for the seller, good for the buyer, permits the addition of a valuable medical resource to the town of Fairfield. I think the application is worthy of your approval. Dr. Patterson is here with me today. She and I would be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you, Travis Patrick. Is there any questions?
I always ask this, you know, it's coming. There will be no reduction whatsoever in the number of handicap spaces required. All spaces reduced will be of general use.
Absolutely. I would just note one thing. I did speak with Fred Urie, who owns the building, and he is, during his twenty-one years of ownership, never had an issue with there not being enough parking on space for his use, never anything going off-site or on the street. I think it's relevant to note.
Any other questions? Okay. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone in opposition to the application? Eight eighty-three Black Rock Turnpike. I'm gonna close the hearing on eight eighty-three Black Rock Turnpike. Thank you, Travis.
Thank you very much.
Our next item is number four. One ninety-six Wormwood Road, map one four three parcel one four six, petition of Nicholas and Angela Mercurio for variance of zoning regulations section five point two point four to reduce the street line setback from thirty feet, currently forty-three point eight feet, proposing twenty-six point nine feet, and the sideline and some of two sideline setbacks from seven feet and twenty-five feet, currently sixteen point seven feet and thirty-six point five feet, proposing four point three feet and twenty-one feet, and section five point two point five to increase the lot coverage from twenty percent, currently fifteen point one percent, proposing twenty-three point five percent. Permission to construct a front and rear two-story addition and side one-story addition premises A zone, and whenever you're ready.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, no worries. No, you're, you're, you're following my instructions, and I'll never complain about that.
Is this location secure?
That's fine, yeah, I think that's fine. And are you Ms. Jensen?
I am, yes. Thank you for your patience.
No worries.
I am Cynthia Jensen. I'm with Richter and Seegan. We're landscape architects in Avon, Connecticut. I'm here representing Nick and Angela Mercurio on the back row there. They're the residents and owners of one ninety-six Wormwood Road. And Peggy Rubens Duel, the architect for the project, is also here, so they can answer any questions that I won't be able to answer. Nick and Angela, they've lived in their home for almost ten years. They love the neighborhood, and they plan to stay here and continue to raise their family there. So they are hoping to build a new one-car garage in addition to their home, which was originally built in nineteen forty-eight. The original nineteen forty-eight home has a rear basement garage, which you will see is no longer functional due to the, well, it was not functional, due to the slopes on the property and the other characteristics that place unique constraints on the property. They have shared their plans with the neighbors, and they did get some signatures of support, which I can pass out now. And I did also want to provide, the photos that we'll be showing here are, were in the application, but I just wanted to put them together, so you don't have to leak through everything. There is an original and six copies of this. Do I?
Uh, you can give me. I'll, I'll take care of that.
Okay.
I'll give the original down to.
Okay.
Decker.
So the applicants are seeking variances that are necessary to build the proposed one, one and a half car garage and a small addition to their existing house. The additions include a two-story, I'm just gonna move this back, a two-story addition on the north side of the house, a small one-story addition adjacent to that, and those will include an expanded kitchen, a new laundry mudroom on the first floor, and expanded second floor bedroom, and a partial new basement below the addition. There's also a proposed one and a half car garage at the front corner with a second floor home office space, a new entry porch on the front. The front door does need to shift to accommodate the new garage, so the porch would shift with the new door. And there's also a small deck addition, a four by four and a half inch square, four by four and a half foot deck addition at the back to accommodate a new egress door off of the main floor. The requested setback variances are needed for the small garage, which will extend three point one feet into the front yard and two point seven feet into the minimum side yard, and reduce the sum of the two side lot lines by four feet. The requested variance is also needed for the new addition garage porch and deck landing, which will increase the coverage by three point five percent over the allowed twenty Just wanna go over the site plan, and then there are some photos, some three D architectural renderings of the proposed addition. You can see on the site plan, the existing house in the center of the, the site plan, the garage at the north corner of the house, the two-story addition on the north side, the two-story portion will extend six point two feet off the existing house, and then there's a small one-story addition that is six point three feet off of that. As I mentioned, the porch does need to shift because the door, the front door will shift, and the porch will shift with that. And there is a small deck addition on the back to accommodate the new door for egress. I think as you can see, this is the existing photo, and obviously the proposed photo with the existing house, new porch, and the new one-car garage. And what we're doing here is actually, we're able to, because of the topography, and we'll talk about the topography later because that is the hardship, we're actually able to bury a portion of the garage into the front slope to help minimize the street, the impact to the street view. Again, this is just another view, the existing house, kind of an oblique view, the existing house with the new porch, and the garage, the new garage. And these are just some of the rear photos of the proposed additions and garage. So as you can see, I think the addition and the garage are in balance with the existing house and design an appropriate scale so that they don't overpower the house and are on scale with the other homes on the street. The proposed garage is minimal in size and also in keeping with the other garages on the street. The corner garage will be buried into the slope of the hill, as I mentioned, and it'll be sensitive then to the views from the street and minimize the exposed height. We'll also be planting evergreen trees along the property line and at the corner to help provide some privacy and screening. These are some existing photos of the property, also the town G I S map and an aerial photo of the site. So the applicants have a hardship due to lots of physical characteristics of steep slopes and extreme grade change and the existing location and orientation of the house. So these hardships necessitate the variance request before the setback and the coverage. As I mentioned, the existing house was built in nineteen forty-eight. The lot is on the east side of Wormwood Road and located on the portion of Wormwood Road that has a substantial elevation slope change. The topography of the area generally slopes from northeast, I'm sorry, northwest to southeast, with much of the elevation change actually occurring on the applicant's property. Consequently, the applicant's property has sloped both from north to south and from east to west with an overall grade change of eighteen feet within their own property. The property is bounded by two retaining walls. There's a five-foot-high retall, uh, wall on the north side, and a five-foot, three-inch high wall retaining on the south side, which, what they actually do is they actually create more level areas on the north and the south property with the grade change then, and the slopes are more concentrated on the applicant's property. To align with the sloping topography, the original house was built on an angle to the street line and the side yards. It's actually the only house on that street that was not built parallel to the street and the side yards. So it creates a unique relationship between the house and the property line. In fact, if the house had been built parallel to the street, similar to all the other houses on the neighborhood, on that road, the proposed footprint of around forty-seven feet would actually fit within the fifty-foot buildable area, so we would not need a side yard setback variance. So instead, what the angle does is it actually creates a pinch point of only ten to thirteen feet along the south side, which does not allow for clear access down into the lower level garage. The nineteen forty-eight house was built with a rear basement garage to try and work with the topography. Access to the rear of the applicant's property is extremely difficult due to the steep slopes along the south side of the house, leading down to the basement level at the back of the house. To accommodate the steep topography and the basement elevation, there's a retaining wall that also extends out from the back of the house that creates an obstacle to maneuvering around into the rear garage door. The house was also set further back from the street and the front property line due to the existing slopes in the front, which reduces the rear yard area for maneuvering. So the combination of the limited level space at the rear of the property due to the significant slopes and difficulty navigating a narrow space between multiple retaining walls actually makes it impractical and unsafe to access and maneuver into a rear garage. The applicants have actually spoken to a neighbor who lives next, who lives next door, who has lived there for longer, and actually used to mow, take care of the lawn when they were younger. And to their knowledge, the rear garage has never been used, just because it is not safely Regarding the coverage variance, the extreme sloping terrain necessitates the use of a rear deck and deck steps for safe egress from the back of the house and around the property and safe and reasonable use of the property in keeping with other single-family homes in the neighborhood, where you typically would have an outdoor space off the main living space. Properties without extreme slopes can build on-grade patios for safe egress and use of exterior spaces, which are not included in coverage calculation. And in fact, without the deck, the lot coverage with the existing house, the addition, the garage and the porch would actually be below the twenty percent maximum. We did look at some furniture. We looked at putting a garage on the south side of the building, actually over on that side of the building, but similar variances would be required, and actually, if the condition's even tighter, the garage would extend even farther into the side yard setback, and there's a substantial existing retaining wall along the south property line due to the sloping terrain. So a garage on the south side would be approximately just six inches from that retaining wall and be much more visually prominent, and we wouldn't be able to do any landscaping or screening of that because of the, well, the lack of space, really. The side property line setback would be two point seven feet rather than the proposed request of four point three feet on the north side. So in summary, the requested variance will not affect the plan of conservation and development, and that the property will remain a single-family dwelling in a residential zone. The design is sensitive to the views from the street, and the proposed garage is being buried into the slope. The proposed addition will be in keeping with the rest of the house and will harmonize with the character of Wormwood Road and the property's physical characteristics of the slopes, extreme grade change, and the existing location and orientation of the house that was originally to try and work with the topography are hardships that necessitate the request for these variances. We believe the approval of the variances will no way, in no way compromise the public health, safety and welfare and property values of the neighborhood, and there will be no detrimental character change to the neighborhood. And in fact, I think it will actually make exiting the driveway safer for the residents and the neighbors. The proposed garage addition is minimal in size and in keeping with other garages in the neighborhood. And as I remind you, they did receive support from, actually, the neighbors that would be the most impacted, that are adjacent on the south and the north, two neighbors on the north, one on the south, and actually across the street. So you should have those signatures. And we thank you for your consideration. And again, the owners and Peggy, the architect, are here. If you have any questions, we do have the architectural plans. If you- the architectural plans if you have any specific questions about that.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions? Jane, yes, go ahead.
I notice you're showing proposed evergreen screening trees. Is that being locked up at the construction area for approval?
No, we would do that anyway for, for screening and privacy.
So, okay.
Yeah.
So it's not being locked up as a condition of approval?
We would plant them, well...
What she's asking, Anthony, is would, would your clients be willing to accept that as a condition for approval to install the, the greenery and shrubs and plantings to that side of the house?
Yes. I think they're going to want it anyway.
The property next to them where the tree are going is much higher.
Yeah. I think one of the photos that I handed out at the very end of your packet, it actually, you could see the retaining wall that is along the set of the property. So they're actually about five feet high.
They may want them for themselves anyway. So it's not a...
And their house is actually 40 feet, that's their backyard, their house is actually 40 feet from the property, so.
Thank you for making your...
We're going to do it anyway. I know.
The sentence is probably not used to a request about a condition for approval. The attorney's... So, any other questions? All right. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Is there any... People can't move when I announce. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? This is 196 Wormwood Road. Okay, I'm going to close the hearing on 196 Wormwood Road. Thank you very much. The only say that is a couple of times I have moved a little too fast and someone jumped up, so I'm very kind to people that want to talk, so I don't cut them off. Number five is 1749 Stratfield Road map 47 parcel 21, addition of Jennifer Keller for a variance of zoning regulation section 5.2.4 to reduce both street line setbacks and sideline setbacks from 40 feet, common 30 feet and 15 feet, currently 31 feet, 20.3 feet and 11.9 feet, proposing 31.2 feet, 22.8 feet and 14.5 feet. Permission to construct a second floor addition premises R3 zone. And Keller?
Yes, I am.
Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Keller. I live at 1749 Stratfield Road. I am asking for a zoning variance to pretty much bump out the front of my second story to make it more safe. The current second story ceilings are only six foot eight, so they're not up to code at this point. I also do not have windows that allow any of the firemen, God forbid they should ever come entrance into the second story through the windows. For this, I, my house was built in 1950, and so it is squarely in all of the wrong places.
You need to...
You have all of the...
Yes, we have all the plans. And we have the petitions that were signed as well.
Yes.
Is there anyone who wants to ask questions, Ms. Keller? Or her assistant?
Yes. Hi, I'm her assistant. No, I'm Dave Hallway, Cornerstone Building, I'm Ms. Keller's friend and builder, trying to help her along on this small project. What it is, and as it's stated in the, in the record, is I believe it's stated as an addition, I perhaps would like to call it more of a dormer on the, it's a small Cape Cod, and it's a dormer on the front of the house so that it allows her to take those existing bedrooms and leave them alone. They're going to be the same bedrooms, same footprint, not extending the footprint of the house whatsoever, but she just has a nonconforming issue with the house. But honestly, the roof will only be changed in the front of the house, the front elevation, to accommodate the dormer. And that dormer will not go even over the existing gutter that's there, that's just up above.
Thank you.
Yes.
And the board having questions? Hearing no questions. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the application, 1749 Stratfield Road? Is there anyone in opposition to 1749 Stratfield Road for the application? All right, I'm going to close the hearing on 1749 Stratfield Road. Thank you, Ms. Keller.
Thanks.
Our next item is number six, 181 Cotonna Drive, map 76, parcel 273, petition of James and Wendy Muschett for a variance of zoning regulation section 5.2.4 to reduce the rear setback from 30 feet, currently 23.2 feet, proposing 10.5 feet, and section 5.2.5 to increase the lot coverage from 20%, currently 21.5%, proposing 25.9%. Permission to construct a one-story addition premises A-zone. Mr. Decker was controlling the...
I was doing my best, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, wait, I didn't hear you.
I didn't hear you. I just, I put the hand up with the top motion.
Oh, I didn't see. Oh, yeah. Doggo. Hey, approach the bench.
The podium.
Yeah.
No bench. I'm just a chairman.
Thank you, yes. I'm Jim Muschett. I was just dropping off our supporting materials there, the copies of letters from the neighbors' petition and the plans. Good afternoon, I think it's still afternoon. I'm Jim Muschett. On behalf of my wife Wendy, who's here, and my mother-in-law Nancy Braun, who is not here, I would like to thank the board for hearing our appeal today. As shown in the property records and on our proposed plan, our hardship is that we purchased a home on an already nonconforming lot. Being a corner lot and of an irregular shape, as well as the placement of our house, means that our setback of 28 feet is already less than the 30-foot minimum, and we are asking for the closest point to now be 10.5 feet. In addition, being an irregularly smaller lot means our existing house coverage, our existing house coverage is 21.5% and already over the maximum 20%. We are asking for the coverage to now be increased to 25.9%. Knowing this, today we come before you to ask for approval of our variance request to increase our nonconformity and setback in coverage to meet our family's needs. Our need is to create room in our home to be able to take care of our mother slash mother-in-law, Nancy Braun, as she ages. We would need the proposed addition in order to have her live with us. We are only looking to add enough space for her needs. We are not going to change the roofline of our house nor change its, its appearance from the street. The position of the proposed addition will have the least visual impact on our neighbors. As requested, we have shared our proposed plans with our five proximal neighbors, excuse me, and they all have signed off in support of our petition. Furthermore, I have spoken with our two adjacent neighbors, those who would be most affected by the proposed addition. They have each written a letter in support of our appeal. I've offered copies of all of this to you for your, for your review, and I'm happy to answer any questions, and I thank you for listening to our appeal today.
Thank you, Mr. Shep. Is there any, any questions from the board? Hearing no questions. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone that has opposition to the application, 181 Cotonna Drive? All right, hearing nothing. I'm going to close the hearing on 181 Cotonna Drive. Thank you very much. Next item is number seven, that's 855 Bronson Road, map 228, parcel 19A, is an apple petition of Adam Munson and Brianna Solomon for a variance of zoning regulation section 5.2.4 to reduce the street line setback from open porch from 40 feet, proposing 23.3 feet, and section 5.2.5 to increase lot coverage to 10%, proposing 11.67%. Permission to expand front porch premises double A-zone.
Hello, Adam Munson, 855 Bronson, representing myself and my wife Brianna Solomon. This was previously brought up in April for a second-story master and a front porch. At that time, we're asking for a five-foot front porch, and when my wife started looking at furniture, she wanted it bigger. So now we're asking for a seven-foot front porch, so that brings us to, approaches two more feet into the setback and then also increases the lot coverage. So I'm there to ask for a variance to, I don't know, it's to increase that by two feet or a variance for the whole second story and a seven-foot porch.
All right. Yes.
What is done?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Munson. The board have any questions for Mr. Munson? All right.
I think you guys have, my neighbors signed off on it.
Yes, you do, sir. And I'll see if there's anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the application, 855 Bronson Road. Is there anyone that has opposition to the application, 855 Bronson Road? None? I didn't hear anything, so we're going to close the hearing on 855 Bronson Road. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our next item is number eight, 149 Beaver Street, map 40, parcel 341, petition of Matthew Sylvia for a variance of zoning regulations, section 5.2.4 to reduce the street line setback from 20 feet to the house and 12 feet from open front porch, currently 15.7 feet and 11.9 feet, proposing 15.7 feet and 8.2 feet. Permission to remove and rebuild existing front entry and open porch premises B-zone. And this is coming in... Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Sylvia.
I'm Matthew Sylvia, 149 Beaver Street, Fairfield, Connecticut. Like to remove the existing front addition and stairway and in disrepair and construct a new one-story addition with new front landing and stairs. Essentially, there's a front addition built over top of precast concrete stairway and landing, so the stairs now lead right up to the front door with the storm door opening out over the stairs, which is unsafe and nonconforming. So the hardship is that we have a pre-existing nonconforming dwelling that was constructed within the street line setback. The front property line is currently 13 feet away from the street. Most normal right-of-ways are eight to 10 feet, which would not require us a need for any type of variance. The current home built in 1966 is standard Cape Cod with the stairs to the second floor right inside the front door. So the added one-story enclosed entry, covered landing and new stairway would allow a much safer access to the home.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sylvia. The board have any question? Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, I've spoken with many of the neighbors. I've gotten a number of signatures already to you and have a few more coming.
All right, thank you, sir. The board have any questions for Mr. Sylvia? All right. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone in opposition to the application, 149 Beaver Street? All right, hearing nothing. We're going to close the hearing on 149 Beaver Street. Thank you, Mr. Sylvia.
Thank you.
Next item, number nine, 38 Lightholz Point, was continued to October. Next item is number 10, 348 Sunny Home Drive, map 139, parcel 394, petition of Maria Everly for a variance of zoning regulation section 5.2.5 to increase lot coverage in total floor area from 15% and 30%, currently 15.83% and 29.9%, proposing 17.4% and 30.98%. Permission to construct a pool house premises R3 zone. All right, go ahead, sir.
Hi, my name is George Scavardonis. I represent my wife. She's the owner of the home. She's supposed to join us by webex, but I don't think she could because of the sort of meeting she has. We're just really looking to construct a pool house. My wife and I are natives of Connecticut. We grew up here, lived all over the world, most recently we were in Manhattan. We were there during the lockdown, and we decided a couple of years ago to leave and come back to our native Connecticut to sort of build our home or we're essentially going to die there. So...
Sure.
So we, we love the town. Recently, my father-in-law passed away in February. My mother-in-law is left. She lived in Watertown, Connecticut for 74 years. She loved the town so much that, to my personal dismay, we moved her down here to Fairfield at a different house. She doesn't live with us. So we're just looking to put in a pool, the pool house. We do have a legal hardship. We have a corner lot. By the way, we submitted all the plans. You should have them in front of you. If you need them, I could get them for you. We have the signatures from the adjacent neighbors. They signed off on it. Yeah, there really isn't much more to that.
All right. Thank you, sir. And what was the last name again?
I'll spell it for you.
Scavardonis.
Correct.
All right. The board have any questions for Mr. Scavardonis? Hearing no questions. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the application, 348 Sunny Home Drive?
Just to sum up, my name's Jay Marlin, Marlin Home Services, I've been working on his house over in Fairfield. Beautiful home, beautiful idea he has set up here. It's a great thing he's doing, but the lot's on a corner, and that's the real hardship for the pool house. It's really just a little bit of square footage we need just for the pool house. That's all, just one thing.
Do you want me to ask?
It's just the signatures from my head. I can't remember if I scanned it, you guys or not.
Oh, no, I have that.
You do?
Yeah, we'll get it. All right. Any, anyone in opposition to the application? Hearing no other comments. We're going to close the hearing on 348 Sunny Home Drive. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Next item, number 11, 599 King Highway West, has been continued to October. Number 12, 3300 Post Road, has been continued to October. And now we're going to end after number 13, so number 14, 4185 Black Rock Turnpike, is also continued to October. Number 13 is the last item on our agenda for business today, 212 Center Street, map 241, parcel 107, petition of Tracy Albertis, trustee for a variance of zoning regulation section 5.2.4 to reduce the sideline and rail line setbacks from 15 feet and 30 feet, currently 5.1 feet and 6 feet, proposing 10.1 feet and 7.2 feet. A petition, permission to construct two-story garage premises R3 zone. Attorney Allen.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Always good to be bringing up the rear after a short meeting where you all not had a break since 3 o'clock. You will note that considering the weather, I did dress like Colonel Sanders this morning, but that's the only iteration I'm making today's meeting. Seriously, I'm here representing Tracy Britis. Tracy is seated right there in the back row, she's waving to you. She's the longtime owner of the property at 212 Center Street. It's located in the R3 zone, and as my friend and I, Jack Johnson, who's here, will elaborate on in a minute, we're seeking your approval for a new accessory structure within a accessory drilling unit as is now allowed by the zoning regulations above. As I said, Tracy and her family have lived at the Center Street address for 25 years. I'm going to embarrass her a little bit. She's a remarkable, you close your ears. I mean, she's a lawyer, she's an author, she's a painter, she's an avid gardener. Indeed, if you ever have a chance to tour her gardens, which are part of the Pequot Library Tour, you're going to find yourself a little breathless. And they do form an inspiration for Tracy's painting, and Tracy's painting is a very serious part of what's motivating this particular development. After a serious health scare where throat cancer left her with some disabilities, Tracy became a full-time painter and began using the existing garage, which I'll talk about in a minute, as a place for her to paint and store her supplies. This passion of hers has grown into a very substantial and recognized business. uh, that she runs out of her home selling paintings online, and it has helped her find great meaning in her life. Uh, and as her children has grown, given her a focus, uh, as she is alone in the house. Speaking of her children, uh, they both, of course, grew up in the Southport home, they now live in New York. They often come to visit, uh, their mother, and indeed, uh, her son Dante has considered and is considering at some point in time relocating to the main house. Why is that relevant? Well, that gets us to the ADU. Because with the ADU as allowed in the R-three zone under the current zoning regulations, this will give, uh, the family some flexibility. If Dante does move into the main house, uh, Tracy can still be on the property she loves, with her gardens, with her families. Uh, until then, uh, when the children come up to visit, they'll have a place to stay as well. So, this application revolves around her family, her painting, and giving them the flexibility, uh, that they will want to have in the future so that they can keep the family homestead what it is. Uh, the existing garage is key to the application because it is a existing non-conforming structure, uh, both with regard to the side property line at five point one feet and, uh, the rear property line at six feet. As shown on the plans, which, uh, Jack Franson will review with you in a minute, uh, we are actually reducing those non-conformities with the rear property line setback being increased to seven point two percent and the side property line setbacks to ten point one feet. As I said, Jack has designed this, uh, very beautiful structure. Uh, it certainly is in keeping and attractive in design with the character of the existing house and the neighborhood. Should you be good enough to approve the application, as we hope you will, we will be going, uh, to the Historic District Commission with regard to this matter because the property is in Historic District. But before I summarize the legal points, I'd like Jack to just come forward and give you a brief overview of the architectural design. Jack?
Thank you, John. I'm Jack Franson, ninety-five Harbor Road, representing, uh, Tracy Britis on this application. Uh, basically, the, the structure is, is pretty much in the same location on the property, and that's important because in the Historic District, the spatial relationships are, are intended to remain as close as possible to the way they are. So, they don't like you moving buildings around greatly or getting rid of buildings where they exist. Um, the idea is to, uh, build a seventeen by thirty-three foot, uh, garage studio with an ADU above it. There's also a cross gable that's a little bit more than eight feet by fourteen feet, and that's where the stair goes. There's also a four-by-eight balcony that will be accessed from the, uh, ADU. And we are in a FEMA zone, we're in AE twelve, um, zone, so there, you can't have habitable space on the, on the ground floor. You can use it as a workshop or garage, but you can't live there. The only, uh, habitable space you can have is the access, you know, the stair going up. The ADU itself is small, it's got a single bedroom, a bath, and a kitchen, the kitchen living areas all together. We are, you know, as John said, we're subject to approval by the Historic District Commission, and we have moved the property, um, we've moved the building, uh, we've doubled the setback from, on the north. It's went from five point one feet to ten feet, and we increased the setback a little bit on the east side from six feet to seven point two feet. And I believe Tracy got, um, the two neighbors that are most greatly affected to, uh, sign her petition. And I'll turn it back over to John. And the building's gonna look very much like it does now, it's gonna have board and batten siding, divided light windows, you know, it's, again, subject to, uh, review with the HTC.
Thank you, Jack. So, from a legal perspective, obviously, as the board knows, you look to Connecticut General Statute, ATS six eight three, and you need to make, uh, two determinations. The variance must be shown to substantially affect the comprehensive zoning plan, and there must be factors recognized by our case law as establishing unusual hardship, uh, appropriate for the granting of the variances. With regard to the first part of the test, as you know, and I cite in my material, the Egan case, our Supreme Court has held that if the use to be made after a variance is granted as a permitted use under the zoning regulations, uh, then the first part of the test is met. Obviously, there's not gonna be any change of the historic use of this property as a single-family residence. And indeed, as I said before, the zoning regulations, uh, have been recently amended to allow a detached accessory structure to contain an accessory dwelling unit in the R-three zone. Uh, as previously indicated and as shown on the architectural plans that Jack has just reviewed, we feel that the design is aesthetically pleasing, harmonizes with the existing house, and will have a positive impact on the surrounding neighborhood. Uh, I do have, and I apologize, but I don't have copies for you, but Tracy was diligent tracking down her neighbors who she has spoken to, uh, the folks at five eighty-one Pequot and, uh, one seventy-two Center Street, uh, the Mopets and the Pardines. And they have reviewed the application and they are, I am submitting to your clerk, their, uh, support, are aware of the application of Tracy Britis regarding her property at two twelve Center Street and the approval of a new accessory structure containing her art studio and an accessory dwelling unit. We find her proposal to be attractive in design and have no objection to the granting of the application by the zoning Board of Appeals. As far as the legal underpinnings of the application, there are two. One is hardship, which I'll address in a second, and the second is the impacts relative to the Hescock case and others that I cite in my material. It's long been held by, uh, our Connecticut court that the historic location of a pre-existing non-conforming structure on a lot creates a proper basis for a finding of hardship. Uh, that's applicable here in that, as I've indicated, the property has for many decades had a non-conforming accessory structure located on it. We efforted to make the new structure in the same general vicinity as the existing structure. That became extremely important, as Jack just mentioned, in the context of the Historic District, where we didn't have the flexibility from an HTC standpoint that we might other have to move it in, in a position, um, you know, more compliant with the regulations. So, I think that the existing location of the existing accessory structure that we seek to replace and its non-conforming status provides a hardship argument in accordance with the case law that I cited, page three. As important, more important, is the cases I cited, page four. And as you recognized in prior application, our case law at both the Supreme and appellate court level have long held that an independent legal basis for granting of a variance is found in numerous cases that have held that the reduction of any existing non-conformities provides a proper independent legal basis for granting a variance, independent of the hardship argument. In the present case, the granting of this application, as I've said, uh, and the construction as we propose it, will in fact result in a reduction in the existing non-conformities pertaining to both the side and the year, the rear yard setback. So, in accordance with the Vine case and the Hescock case especially, which I quote, but I won't do here considering the hour at some length, uh, the fact that we are taking a non-conforming structure and reducing the existing non-conformities provides you an independent proper basis to grant the variance. So, in summary, and subject to any questions that you might have for Jack or myself, the structure as proposed, we hope you will agree, is attractive in design, will harmonize with the existing property and the character of the neighborhood. The granting of the variance will result in the reduction of the existing non-conformities with regard to both the side and the rear property line setbacks, and that does provide a proper independent basis for the granting of the variance. The location of the existing non-conforming structure does establish a hardship basis based upon the case law I cite there. And most importantly, this attractive structure will provide Tracy with a suitable studio to continue her painting while at the same time establishing a legal accessory dwelling unit over the studio in order to provide her and her family flexibility in the future with regard to her needs and those of her children. And that was the very reason that the TPZ saw fit to amend their regulations to broaden the availability of HDU units in our town. And this is a classic case of how that will be well utilized to meet the evolving needs of the Britis family. So, be pleased to answer any questions you might have, and thank you for your patience at the end of this long day.
Thank you. Any questions for Attorney Fallon or Mr. Franson? Hearing no questions. Is there anyone who's to speak in favor of the application? No one here, is there anyone, I have to say, though, is there anyone who's to speak in opposition to the application, two twelve Center Street?
Timmyak might jump up there.
If he stayed, I'm sure he would have. Uh, all right, not, hearing nothing, I will close the hearing on two twelve Center Street. Also closing the hearing, uh, today, September seventh. We will take a short break, we'll be back. What do we need, five minutes, is five okay?
Four.
Four or less.
Five minutes. We'll be right back. Back to order, Town of Fairfield, zoning Board of Appeals, September seventh. We're, uh, working session, voting on the matters that went forward today. We've already, uh, taken care of continued docket and a preliminary issue on, uh, jurisdiction. So, then our, now our first matter now to be voting on is general docket number one, six eighty-nine Encore Road, the Town of Fairfield, petition for, uh, light stations, uh, of six, uh, two at eighty feet and four at seventy, was presented by, uh, Mr. Calabrese and assisted by Mr. Lowenstein, uh, regarding this. Entertained a motion to approve?
Brian moves.
Brian serves second. Discussion?
Even given the opposition, I think it's gonna have to go before enough people after us to, to make any of those determinations based on the existing lighting in town. Um, I think it's a reasonable request for this field. And I tend to take them at their word that they're gonna do everything they need to do to work with the, with the aviaries and such.
The issues, uh, to ask the opposition don't really focus on.
On the, on the guts.
Uh, the regulation five point two point two has a maximum height of, uh, of forty feet. It's been in existence for many, many years. It just doesn't apply to athletic fields. I had forty-foot, it shouldn't apply. It does, because there's no other variance. Uh, I played on a football field that had forty-foot lights and I, you know, and I couldn't catch a pass. It wasn't my hand.
So, just to clarify, just to play devil's advocate, what's the hardship?
What's the hardship? This is a very unique piece of property, has a, in, in a residential, that you're supposed to apply residential light structures to high school athletic field? We don't have a regulation that fits to this, there should be one. So, we're sitting here to say, how is this piece of property unique to the A-zone? It's quite unique, got a lot of acreage, it's got an athletic field, and you're applying a home maximum light to an athletic field? Which just doesn't make sense because the technology is, you put them up to point them down so they don't spill out. We have it at Sacred Heart, we have it at Ward, we have it at Lovell, and we have it down at South Pine Creek. It, I mean, I can't dictate what planning and zoning does, but this is, and I don't want to take for, for any balance, this is classic where this, this regulation should not even apply to athletic field. But it does, because there's no other regulation, so we have to apply it. It's not because I'm a football player. Or used to be, a long time ago.
Nor I have a football coach for twenty years.
But it's, it just, it makes, it makes sense, and it's actually much more efficient, less light spillage with the taller they go.
That's great.
Yeah.
Just given the, I mean, the benign concern by the Birdcraft Museum, is there, is it, can there be any kind of stipulation that there, it is lighting up, I don't know, I didn't see much about the dark eye compliance, is there any stipulation against it about the type of lighting, or is that beyond our?
Well, that's beyond us, it's just the height.
Yeah.
We're, we're talking about the height of the lights, and that's for someone else to determine. And you, you can't, and you can't condition, uh, a variance like this as to time constraints. It would be like, you can't go out on your back deck.
No, it's table lighting for dawn light.
Can answer that if you'd like me to.
Sure. All right, bring to the vote.
Yes.
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 You're sitting in my seat.
Number two, five forty-three Old Mill Road, Mr. Timmyak, uh, presented, uh, his own application. It's to construct a two, a two-story, one-car garage, entertained a motion to approve?
Brian moves.
Thank you, is there a second?
Jane seconds.
Thank you, Jane. Discussion?
Notwithstanding, uh, Attorney Fallon's objection, I think it's a reasonable request and use of the space.
And, and, and Jane did press him for, uh?
Topography.
Yes. It only took ten minutes longer than it should have.
Well, because it's important.
It's an important question.
We have, I mean, that's our job.
You got it.
Not to help people find homes for their, you know, distant cousin or, you know, store their empty cars. It has to do with hardship.
Yeah.
And, and, and you, and you, and you made a spread a little bit, so that was good.
Everybody.
To the vote. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Would you like me to go first?
I don't care.
Number three, eight eighty-three Black Rock Turnpike, Attorney Fitzpatrick presented this for eight eighty-three Black Rock Turnpike LLC. It's for medical use, second floor, they need a parking variance, entertained a motion to approve?
So, move.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
I heard everything that he offered and how this particular practice doesn't have a lot of, uh, patients per hour, but just to remind everybody that the variance stays with the building long after this tenant or owner moves on. So, the next practice could come in and have twice as many patients per hour. So, just keep that in mind. They might need more parking, ultimately, we don't know.
It might.
It might.
Usually, no parking reduces business, that therefore reduces parking.
Right, I'm just saying, the argument that was presented, that if, you know, this, this particular medical practice doesn't see a lot per hour, it doesn't really work in the long term.
Any other questions? Bring the vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. Put that in the right spot. Uh, number four, one ninety-six Hornwood Road, um, Mr. Jensen presented this for Mercurios, uh, and, uh, this is to construct a front and rear two-story addition and side one-story addition. Entertained a motion to approve?
So, move.
Brian serves second.
Second.
And discussion? Oh, uh, a, wait, second.
Can I move it, we do it without the condition, before we offer it as a condition?
Yes.
I would, I would move that we offer the, the approval without the condition.
You already did.
Yeah.
You already did, you did.
The applicant offered it as a condition.
Uh, do you want to amend, the motion to amend the motion, to add a condition of the screening?
Yes, yes, I do.
Is there a second to the motion to amend approval with screening? Is there a second?
Sure.
Okay.
Yes.
Discussion on amending the motion of screening, it was offered by them?
On their drawings that it was offered.
Any discussion on that? Okay.
I don't think that just because it was offered, that we should stick to them as a condition of the property.
Thank you.
Uh, if they chose not to do it, it's still a reasonable use of the space, and they're still dealing with a five-foot retaining wall. I don't think it's, I don't think it behooves us to require them to do something they're planning to do anyway.
We're not requiring, they're offering it.
Well, let's just, well, by us putting in a condition, then we are requiring, that's first thing that they're offering. Um, so that rewarding on the amendment, now, this is not four to one, this is majority, on whether we amend the motion to add that condition, okay? If you say yes, you wanna add that condition. What's your vote?
No.
Your?
Yes.
No.
Yes. Um, the amendment is not added. Uh, now, we're back to the original motion to amend, uh, because it was three to two, no, uh, two yeses. Jane and I voted yes on the amendment, uh, so the amendment did not carry. We're back to just the straight, uh, approve, the request, discussion.
I think it's a really nice addition to the neighborhood. I was, when I first looked at the space, I thought it was really confused how they're gonna, it looked, almost looked shoe-horned, but once I saw the topography and the way everything was built in, I thought it was, I thought it was very nice. I thought it was, I thought it was very nice.
Topography gives, gives the hardship on that. Kind of lay on the spot, and it's nice that they're able to put it into the side, which was pointed out by Ms. Jensen. Put it into the, into the hill a little bit to make it even shorter for their neighbors, which is nice. Any other discussion? All right, bring it to a vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. And number five, seventeen forty-nine Strathia Road. Keller presented her own application to construct second-floor addition. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Katie, thank you. All right, and discussion?
It ameliorates several conditions, doesn't it? And.
Thinking of every one. Twenty thousand, the R three there in the neighborhood, only a bridge, twenty thousand minimum. They have just over ten thousand. And adding the front, front cape. If they had it, if, you know, if it was positioned in the right spot. That's like all filled along that street.
Right.
I know, I'm on the top of the hill. If they built them in the right, and, and had the, the right size, we wouldn't have, wouldn't have these issues. Any other discussion? Bring to a vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Number six, one eighty-one Catona Drive, petition to Machet. Mr. Machet presented his application to construct one-story addition. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Ryan, sir, second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. And discussion?
It's a corner lot, so we have to take that into account. It's smaller.
Corner and.
It's a non-conforming, square footage wise.
And you have, yeah, it goes down a couple hundred feet less, but, you know, you look at the FAR, it's still only twenty-nine point three percent with this, with this work, which is something I consider. All right, bring to a vote.
Yes.
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 Yeah. Number seven, eight fifty-five Bronson Road. Monson Solomon, Mr. Monson presented the application. They want to expand that front porch. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Ryan, sir, a sec. Thank you, Terry. All right, discussion?
Has it got a chance to come back?
Well.
We did, we did say if they changed anything, they would have to come back and, you know, go through the process again.
It's the furniture. It's the furniture.
For his sake, I'm inclined, for his sake, I'm inclined to vote no.
No, the hardship that applies.
Yeah, the hardship still applies.
One acre required, and less than a half.
And then less than a half.
And the coverage is going up by one point six percent.
But, but I don't think you should blame your wife to try to get an appropriate.
That was, that was risky.
So, let's bring to a vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Number eight, one forty-nine Breeder Street. Mrs. Silve presented the application for himself to remove and rebuild the existing front entry and porch. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Yes. Second.
Katie, all right. Discussion?
On brevity, style, and safety, I think this is a reasonable application. He's making his entrance safe and usable and that's about it.
Well, it's a lot too, because it's at the end of a dead end, so that the property line is actually.
Property line's weird, the curb line's another, what, eight feet? You got your ruler out, you would probably tell me exactly.
It's appetizing, the lot would need to be conforming.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, bring it.
Small. Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Number nine was continued. Number ten, three forty-eight Sunny Home Drive. Mrs. Scarborough Donas presented the application for his wife, and entertain, he wants to construct a pool house. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All right, discussion?
Non-conforming, two percent coverage, corner lot.
Well, yeah, they got two sides. Technically, it's not a corner, but they got to deal with two sides. Because it's the same street.
Sure, that's it, that's not a corner.
Eh, kind of a corner.
Yeah.
Still the same street.
Yeah.
But it's still the same application.
And they're non-conforming.
All right, ready to vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. Number eleven was continued. Number twelve was continued. Number fourteen was continued. Number thirteen, two twelve Center Street, petition to Tracy Britis, trustee, Attorney Fallon presented this, to construct two-story garage. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Ryan, sir, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Terry. Discussion?
I was going to ask why it didn't get moved into compliance, which is brand new anyway, but I just, you know, Historic District prefers to keep it in the same footprint and stuff like that. Reason to.
Yeah, you, you have other.
I didn't touch anything.
We have. Yeah, you have the issue that you got to keep it in there.
Right.